Good evening. I'd like to call with July 18th Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. This is a right, is a study session meeting tonight. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley, Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Peck.
Santos.
Here.
Mary Yvonne.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Since two of our council members are gone this evening and won't be back, they'll be back next week, I would propose, I'd like to direct the city manager to add the decision-making process for the marijuana item that we're discussing tonight to be added to the next council meeting on, is that July 25th? So tonight we'll hear that item, we'll ask questions, and then when the other two council members come back, they can watch the tape, they can ask other questions of staff, and then on the 25th we can give direction. Because I kind of hate to give direction with just five of us, so if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay? All right, we're going to have, does anybody else have any motions to direct? All right. Start with public invited to be heard, and first up is Mike Chamberlain.
On the second page is what I'll be referring to, and it's highlighted. My name is Mike Chamberlain, I live at 518 East 16th Avenue, Longmont, Colorado. My email address is MikeChamberlain@comcast.net. Mayor, council members, I want to thank Allison Canepa and David McCarty for digging up the minutes of the Sundial HOA meeting held on April 23rd, 2007. Please note that that date coincides with our agreement with the mayor of Longmont. On page two, under the 2007 projects, it states, "City has agreed to remove the native grass and replace it with regular sod." It's been over six weeks and five appearances at councils' public invited to speak since I brought the rough-and-ready Greenway agreement to your attention, and yet still no answer, still no response, and no explanation yet. I know you're caught up in an equally humiliating controversy right now, but this breach of contract grows more damaging to our Greenway daily and requires your immediate attention. Once again, our contract with the mayor of Longmont. hg.org states that verbal agreements are contracts even though they weren't memorialized in writing. Number one, a verbal agreement being reached that was done with the mayor in 2006 from the meetings, from the minutes of that meeting. An offer made, number two, an offer made and a party accepted by another, by one party and accepted by another. Same meeting, agreement made between the mayor of Longmont, myself and the citizens who signed the petition. One party proposed an arrangement and the other party accepted it. Same meeting between myself and the citizens of Longmont I was representing and the mayor. Evidence of performing the services called for under the contract. City management's own words through email correspondence and the work performed on the Greenway following thereafter. And not limited to just those documents, but also any others in city management's possession. Was anyone else present when the contract was made? Yes, Allison Canepa and Dick Anderson representing the Sundial subdivision and the director of Community Development, Phil Devacchio. Written communications between the parties involved, number six, my correspondence with city management and the director of community development after the agreement was reached, and the new paper I just gave you, Sundial's HOA minutes, meeting held April 23rd, 2007. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My lights aren't working here, but I'll try and stay within my time. I'd just like to talk to you briefly about what I consider to be sensationalist journalism. I was watching Next on Channel 9 on Friday, and I was kind of shocked by the way that they were talking about our city and about our public officials. And I think they're sensationalist about it because they were really trying to lead with this story as if it's something that was thought out, and I want to, actually, Mr. Chamberlain brought up an interesting point, and I maybe can relate it to some of his research, and I haven't actually read very much about Fourth and Fifth Amendment, so I may not be that well-prepared to speak, but when people come to town, they sign an HOA agreement and they follow those agreements, and when people come to town and they rent, they sign an agreement and they follow those agreements. And under these suites agreements, I believe they signed up for some, you know, things, and probably under a lower level of service than these people who come and sign up for HOAs. So even though this may be a door-to-door situation, would not happen in HOA, if we had a situation where these houses were blowing up from people doing chemicals, and some of these people who come to town are probably thinking that there's less limits in Colorado as far as making other chemical mixtures. So I'm thinking that the sensationalist, getting back to sensational journalism, and trying to force out that Longmont did something wrong in this situation, I think our public officials, and particularly Mike Butler being up here, and I think Mike Butler is one of the greatest people we have, and since, I think I'm, actually have a little bit of extra time here, so I maybe shouldn't digress, but he lives here in our community and I've seen him at concerts and things, which is really nice that we have somebody who lives amongst us who is trying to help make our safety decisions. At the same time, I've seen him run over a traffic cone, and, you know, just because he's here amongst us, and so he's a real person. But I've also seen him come to the lobby when I was standing down there, and "Are you being helped?" And I was dumb enough to watch somebody's pit bull, and so I didn't really feel like somebody from his level should help me at that point, but I was really glad to see this person. And when he retires, if I see him at concerts in our community, I want to be so thankful and thinking that we really are in a very safe community because we have people like Mike Butler. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. My name is Kaitlyn Edwards. I am the community liaison for Boulder-based cannabis company Terrapin Care Station. On behalf of our 150 employees, we applaud you all for your thoughtful approach to marijuana regulations. We encourage you to direct staff to move forward with an ordinance that includes Option Two with respect to selecting applicants. Though we have been successful in the request for proposals, RFP, process in the city of Aurora as well as the state of Pennsylvania, we are aware of the challenges that this process presents for a city. As a member of the chambers of commerce of Aurora, Boulder, and Longmont, we understand that determining which business is going to be a good community partner is the same for marijuana businesses as it is for any other business. A history of civic engagement is a strong indicator of whether a business intends to make a thoughtful investment in the community. Terrapin has been the sponsor of numerous civic events throughout Boulder County. For example, we were a primary sponsor of Classically Cannabis, a fundraiser for the Colorado Symphony. We currently partner with the Denver restaurant, The Preservery, for Concerts for a Cause, where we provide, in addition to a cash gift, outreach and organizational support for a fundraiser for local, small capital nonprofit organizations. We are also sponsors of this year's Longmont Startup Week and are even hosting a panel. In summary, Option Two in the staff memo will give the city the opportunity to investigate in a meaningful way the history of applicants, which we are confident will result in Longmont's license program creating jobs, revenue for the city, and strong community partners that will provide broad benefit to the entire community of Longmont, not just cannabis consumers. I'm happy to bring any questions that you may have to our Director of Government Affairs, who will supply you with a timely written response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of city council. My name is Marion Brands. I live at 1131 Birdie Road, Broomfield, Colorado. I'm here this evening on behalf of Prairie Protection Colorado, and I would like to read to you a letter that was recently written by members of our coalition. There is, as a result of a recent Colorado Parks and Wildlife review, and of course, this is in relation to the relocation of the prairie dogs located at the, the...
Third in Wellington.
I'm sorry?
Third in Wellington.
Yeah, Third in Wellington.
Wellington.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with Longmont, but I am familiar with prairie dogs, and they're very important to me. The Great Sugar, excuse me, anyway, warehouse. So as a result of this recent Colorado Parks and Wildlife review, a relocation site for up to 130 prairie dogs has been identified, the Ome property. In light of this new information, we are formally requesting that the city of Longmont require Sun Construction to submit a Colorado Parks and Wildlife wild-to-wild relocation application for the Ome property, for the 13-acre colony currently residing on the Great Western Flex Building Development Site, and that is the site that I was scrambling to tell you. We're aware of the required notification of Boulder County Commissioners and the Colorado Parks and Wildlife mandated approval of surrounding landholders for the Ome site. Obviously, these are obstacles that can potentially be overcome, but we cannot begin the steps to overcome them unless a CPW permit is submitted by Sun Construction to initiate the CPW review process. This is a basic step in the developer's good faith effort according to Longmont Code. As the city is also aware, Western Environment and Ecology, a contractor hired by Sun Construction, has committed in writing to continuing their good faith effort on behalf of their client in finding a relocation site for this colony for a minimum of 90 days. It was stated by Western Environment and Ecology that this 90-day period would expire no earlier than August 9th, 2017. Since we are well within this 90-day good health, good faith effort period, we have continued to seek and in fact have located another potential relocation site. In addition to the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge Site, we have already presented to the developer and city.
So we only get three minutes now. Once the red light's on, you can't speak anymore. So thank you.
Okay. Sorry, but the basics, the big issue here is that the developer has not even submitted...
That's crystal clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ketteler?
You pronounce it like the Dutch, it's Kettilar.
Oh, Kettilar.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm like a cat in a room full of rockers. I'm nervous. I was going to come to the last council meeting and talk myself out of it.
So could you state your address for us, please?
Yes, I can. I live in my '98 Volvo.
Okay.
Here in Longmont. I'm homeless and I'm a senior. Part of what I want to talk about first is the stupidity of arguing over emails. We got that during the big election, can we drop it? There's a lot more important things going on. I met a young couple. He used to work at Amgen. He wants to move back to Longmont. He can afford the housing, he doesn't want to pay that much, and I agree with him. If we have another housing bust, people are going to be left with houses that they're paying too much for. He's sensible, and I think there's a lot of people like him. Then you have seniors who have been outpriced, priced out of their apartments. There is a lot of us. We don't know what to do and where to go. Then you've got the other homeless. I know Boulder County is working on it, and you guys are working on it. There's some simple solutions and not-so-simple solutions. I'm looking at everything I can to help you out. I'm not that much of a genius. I don't have that much going for me, but there's tiny homes, little homes, freight car homes, they can all be made nice, so no one's ashamed to be around them. I'm checking out the cost to finalize them all out. They're going to be cheaper than trying to buy a house so that homeless can live in it. I'm also checking to see if we can have a grant and get somebody who's got gobs of money, not me, so that we can buy houses with five bedrooms and have sort of a boarding house of elderly people. These, I think, are very important. The elderly are growing in numbers all the time, and if we have no place to live, it's everybody's problem. Unless you want us all to die, and you'd be missing out on a hell of a lot of good information, feistiness, and whatever else you want to call it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ron Gallegos, 424 Kimbark. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here tonight to support the sales and regulation of marijuana retail in our community. I think there's a strong business case to be made for not leaving money on the table. There are instances now outside our city, both on the north end and south end, where this activity is taking place. We might as well regulate it through the existing process. The liquor licensing process, I think, serves as a good framework for doing that. It measures their financial ability, their business ability, and finally, it tests their morality or their moral needs in terms of letters of references. It also lets the public speak to needs and desires, so I think it's a process in place that's working fairly well for licensing of liquor establishments, and I think it can be used here as well. Finally, I would encourage the council to be rather aggressive in fees, taxes, and charges levied, similar to Adams County. There is no reason we have to be the low-cost provider. Let the bar be high and let that set the terms of penetration into our community. It's for these reasons that I support that endeavor and encourage you to send a positive message to staff and positive language for our ballot initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Summers.
Hi, Susan Summers, 1418 Gallon Lee Lane in Longmont. I know you probably don't need to be reminded of this, but I was going to remind you of the status of the Great Western Flex prairie dogs. To date, the developer, Sun Construction, still has not submitted the city-required CPW application for the prairie dogs to be relocated to Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge. Five of us were at the Jefferson County Commissioners Meeting this morning to talk about this, and they did confirm they have received nothing from this company. So they have not denied any relocation, they have not received anything to approve or deny. One disturbing new development in this process is that the developer's contractor, Western Ecology, has recently dusted these prairie dogs for fleas, and this is an action that they take prior to trapping the prairie dogs and donating them to the ferret recovery center, which basically is a death sentence for these prairie dogs. We don't know why this developer has taken this action when he has not submitted the required application to CPW, and I know that the city requested that he do so. We also recently discovered in this process another possible relocation site within Boulder County for a portion of these prairie dogs. So the city now is under obligation to require a relocation application to this property as well, in keeping with the developer's good faith effort to find a relocation site for these prairie dogs. We can only continue to wonder why this developer refuses to move forward with this viable relocation option. We have found him property at no charge, we have found him relocator, you know, he doesn't have to use it, but a relocator that's offered him a break in the pricing because we asked this person to, and he just refuses to work with us or acknowledge anything that's going on here. We did also talk to the new tenant of the Great Western Flex Building this morning, which is Creative Learning Systems, and they expressed concern that if the city demolishes their warehouse, they have no place to move. So this process needs to move forward, this company needs to submit their application, we need to move the prairie dogs, we need to get the building built, and we need to get creative learning systems in there, because if you don't, and they have no place to go, that's a loss of at least 25 jobs for that company, which is also disconcerting to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Anna Rivas, and I live at 4501 Nelson Road, Unit 2306 in Longmont. And as Susan mentioned, it seems like they have started the process of dusting the burrows at that site, which makes it seem like, and based on everything Susan has said, it sounds to me like the developer is not making any effort to try to relocate the prairie dogs that are on there. And instead, he's going to go, it seems he wants to go forward with just trapping a few to donate to the Raptor Center and then killing the vast majority of them. If this is indeed the case, he's blatantly violating Longmont's code, and I don't understand why he's being allowed to do this, despite the fact that there are now two potential receiving sites. Our native wildlife is rapidly being killed off, and allowing developers to blatantly disregard code that was implemented to try to protect them is not acceptable. Please ask that he submit a plan to CPW. Thank you.
Selene DiAris.
That was very interesting narration. Like, who's that? Okay. Hi, I am Selene DiAris. I live at 1005 Third Avenue, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, mayor and city council. Last time I was here, I was trying to protect a tree. Today, I am trying to protect the lives of many individuals called prairie dogs. As the cottonwood was also a native species, prairie dogs, once again, we are here talking about a native species that our community, I think, has to step up to stewardship at a very new level. In the west, in our region, the loss of habitat for wild animals, particularly prairie-based animals, is declining exceptionally fast. animals, is declining exceptionally fast. We do not have a comprehensive plan about that. And I would ask that this scenario that you are currently faced with, where rarely two sites have been presented to you, what a blessing, then I would ask that you step up your game and you hold this business to account. It's an essential symbolic, yet more than symbolic gesture. It is decent, it is honoring a high moral code, and it's honoring the law, which is the highest moral code we have all agreed to. So, other people have given you all of the details, and you have access to those. My plea to you, as a Tennessee girl who spent time at the White House and ended up here in Colorado for the last 24 years, who serves on the Prairie Dog Coalition's Humane Society of the United States Advisory Board, these animals deserve your respect, your care, your stewardship, and as a community, we have to educate each other on why they matter. If I were to ask this room to show their hands as to whether or not they like seeing an eagle cross over in November, a bald eagle, or like seeing a variety of hawks soaring around in the sky, I just have a funny feeling, a lot of people say that inspires them, that touches them. Well, those birds of prey do not go to Whole Foods or King Supers for their meals. They visit prairie dog colonies, which also host lots of other native species and other food sources and other burrowing owls and many other creatures. Hundreds, literally, of animals and other species depend on prairie dog colonies. They are a town, they are families, they have relationships, they have a language, they deserve our respectful treatment. Thank you.
Joanne Peterson?
Mayor and City Council Members, I live at 1007 Third Avenue, and I'm actually a native of sixth generation from the 1860s. And I had an interesting conversation with my aunt about prairie dogs, because they were cattlemen and sheep herders. And asked if, what her opinion of the prairie dogs were, and she said they were very important species to regenerate the land overall. And, I mean, at 104, if you know this, you have a huge background behind you, knowing the importance of this species, not only to your land, but all the other wildlife. Because since they are keystone species, this is a very important species. And one thing for sure, people do not understand prairie dogs. I know that they are in locations that are very difficult for developers and builders and so on, but they are a very important wildlife species. And I really would want to ask you to stand firm on the code that Longmont has and requiring the developer to relocate with two sites available. Not always do you have this chance, and we can do, this can be a win-win. This is something that we can show, the right steps and the right solution. There, I feel that there's just no reasonable excuse to kill these prairie dogs when we have these options and we have codes and we have the time to do so. So I really encourage you to do it, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Shannon Fender?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Council. Shannon Fender, Director of Public Affairs for Native Roots Colorado. We do operate a dispensary just adjacent to the city limits on 19 South Sunset. I want to thank you all so much for your deliberate and very conscious actions.
Shannon, for the record, could you give us your address, too, please?
Yes, sorry, 2300 Walnut Street in Denver.
Thank you.
Yeah, so over the last six months, we've had many conversations with council, with you as individuals, and we generally feel like we are in support of staff's recommendations on option two. However, we do feel like there was a significant mark missed in that it appears that this council has a vested interest in allowing current operators who've invested both time and community research, sorry, community resources into the city, to be allowed an opportunity to annex into the city should they so choose. And so that's what really, what we're asking tonight, is that you do direct staff to allow that opportunity. We do realize that you would like a maximum of four stores, and so I think that that's a smart move for everyone, balancing the needs of the community to have dispersed locations, conversations that we have had with all of you, I think individually, and we agree with you. And so I would just ask that you would take that recommendation and direct that to staff. Thank you.
Rich Yale? Richard Yale, okay.
Good evening, I'm Richard Yale. I live at 1211 Baker Street, Longmont. I'm here tonight, I represent Sustainable Energy Systems of Colorado. And the city was kind enough to give us a letter of support about three years ago, actually four years ago. And I have, I want to, I'll leave this off with the city manager. This is a checklist that we're working down to where we'll be carrying passengers. And we have, this is all progress we've taken since the time that you've given us that support. And this, where we're at is through the bureaucracy and through the licensing, within two years, we can be carrying passengers on a return on investment basis in the first year. That's how far it is. But we've learned during that period that the, what I would call the low-voltage industry, that the country has been working for at least 20 years and working very hard, like the LED light bulbs and things that you see in your house. And you're actually paying a penalty now, because everything that you're buying today in appliances is actually a low-voltage system. But you're paying to increase the power, to bring it into the house, and then step it back down. We've, there is a way, if you, you also have, you as the government or any power company, you've got windmills all over the place, there's solar farms all over. But one of the problems is they're all very specialty, and what they're doing is good only for that location, and then basically, the power is wasted. What if you had a power system that's like a battery? And you can draw on it, and you can draw anything from, say, 12 volts, 6 volts, up to 240 volts, for example? Well, we're discovering that this technology is available, but not only that, did you realize what you have in your fiber optic system with Longmont Power and Light Communications? You could actually be prime producer in your house, and you could sell to the city back through your fiber optics system. That power can be distributed subdivision to subdivision and so forth. So what we'd like to do is ask for a cooperative agreement to work with the city with various departments, because this affects the Transportation Department, it affects, of course, the Electrical, Power and Light. We've also seen an application that may work to help you out with the signals at the railroad crossings and take pressure off from that.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to work with your staff with that agreement.
All right. Strider Binstan?
Good evening, Mayor Combs, Council. I think we, the last couple of weeks, have experienced a tempest in a teacup, which I think has gotten severely overblown, perhaps on both sides, and we need to turn the heat back down and get back to business. I, most people are aware that yesterday or today, the Senate Plan Two to destroy healthcare in America went down, although they're planning on bringing up Plan Three, which will take healthcare away from 32 million people now. So that may come up again in the next week or so. Particular things, we have a president who says, "Make America great." Well, he is great at a number of things. He's a great thief, he's a great liar, he's a great braggart, and he's a great distractor. And what's going on right now? Most of his staff, officials, and relatives, all of a sudden notice, "Oh, I had these secret meetings with these Russian operatives," and dozens and dozens of them, and they all keep forgetting until the press finds out and brings it out. And we just found out today that the president himself had a secret meeting with Vladimir Putin, which was only accompanied by a Russian translator working for the Russian government for an hour. Isn't that interesting? This is serious stuff. And we have Walter Schaub, the director of the Government Department of Ethics, who resigned in protest because the administration does not believe in or allow ethics. That's what we're dealing with. Be aware that this regime is planning another 9/11. Now, there is one hope going on. There are some Americans who are actually beginning to stand up, including General Mattis, General McMaster, General Dunford, and even Secretary of State Rex Tillerson, who yesterday, when Trump badgered them for 55 minutes demanding, "Let's start a war with Iran," they said, "No, they're obeying the treaty that we have, and it's not appropriate to do that now." Maybe some more people in this country will find their honor, their integrity, and their courage, and we won't have an absolute collapse of our country, which is happening right at the top. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak at public invite to be heard? Please come down and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Charles Cutler. I live at 9361 West 60th Avenue in Arvada. I'm a former resident of Longmont. I'm here again in support of the Great Western Flex Prairie Dogs. As you know, Prairie Protection Colorado, along with David Lucas of Rocky Flats, have secured a location for this colony. Recently, another possible site is opened up, yet still, no relocation plans have been filed by the developer. Even though, as I'm looking back over my notes from a council meeting, I believe, two weeks ago, I saw that the city will demand a plan from the developer, well, it's clear that the developer intends, it's clear that the developer intends to kill these prairie dogs, no matter what the law. Only a human could be so inhuman. Let's not forget that these prairie dogs have the same right to life that humans do. The town must ensure that the law is followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Allison Feiler, 12626 North 107th Street. Hello, councilmember mayors. My name is Allison Feiler, and I, along with my mother, own Green Tree Medicinals. We are one of the dispensaries located near Longmont. Many of you know our story, but for those who don't, I opened the first dispensary in Longmont in 2009, and I was swiftly shut down and banned from the city in 2010, along with 10 other businesses. I was luckily able to reopen in an unincorporated parcel in 2010. In 2014, the city of Longmont was negotiating the annexation of my second parcel, and again, shut us down, despite the fact that today, that property is still undeveloped. Many would say that this was done intentionally to shut us down, as we were the only operational dispensary near Longmont. Fortunately, we were able to reopen by purchasing another unincorporated property. However, this was with no assistance from the city, and in fact, the city seemed to do everything they could to stop us from opening, including refusing to allow us to connect to city utilities, forcing us to build a water table and holding tanks that cost us more than $200,000, closing off all of our entrances, forcing us to get an easement, refusing to annex us when we requested it, and this whole process took us over a year to reopen. Over the last seven years, my business has been shut down twice by this city council's decisions. Over 30 people have lost their jobs, and both my mother and myself were almost bankrupt, twice. Today, you discuss an ordinance to allow dispensaries, and I must say, I am frustrated. The reason you shut my business down in 2010 was because dispensaries were not federally legal. Today, dispensaries are not federally legal, so I don't understand what grounds you have to change this decision without consideration of these original businesses. Once again, as I said back in 2010, I think you should be putting this to a public vote. Based on today's agenda, I see that you will be allowing new businesses to open that, unlike my business, were not pushed out of the city limits, and thus, they will not be out on the outskirts of the city like I am. Since they have their choice of locations in the city, they will be able to choose favorably-located and well-designed facilities. My entire dispensary is 800 square feet. When I dispensed in the city, my facility was 2,500 square feet. I believe that alone is a huge disadvantage to my business, and as such, the idea of me annexing into the city, paying up to $44,000 in application fees for a dual center, and paying higher sales tax and property taxes, would probably put me out of business, since my location is physically outside the city limits and far from most homes, making it a destination location, and it's very small and not ideal for a dispensary. As such, I have no interest in being annexed into the city, and I don't believe I can compete with inner-city dispensaries. And through all our trials and tribulations, we had to buy this building, and unfortunately, it's not suited to many other uses. If you do pass this ordinance without a public initiative, I do hope that you will consider giving priority to those businesses that were operating within the city prior to the ban in 2010, rather than new businesses. I know we would love to reopen in a more favorable and equally as competitive location. We have been a longstanding business, serving this community. We are a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and we would love to continue serving this community favorably. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, is there anybody else I'd like to come speak? All right, I guess we'll move on to our study session items.
Mayor, your first item is an update on St. Brane Creek Flood Plain and Resilient St. Brane Project. Nick Wolfram, Director of Engineering Services, is here to present.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, members of council. My name's Nick Wolfram. I'm the Director of Engineering Services with Public Works and Natural Resources Department. We're here this evening to give you a brief update on the Resilient St. Brane Project and discuss a little bit about how it relates to your next topic of the transit station. So, as we go through this, we're going to take a look at the, some of the background and history of the project and the floodplain issues in Longmont, some of the floodplain changes and impacts that those are having on our community, an update of where the Resilient St. Brane Project stands to date. We're going to talk about some of the future phases of the project and funding for those, and we're going to then wrap it up with looking at the impacts that the floodplain has on the transit station area. Little bit of background, actually, before the flood in 2008, the city had done an update of the St. Brane Creek floodplain. And one of the specific reasons we had done that was to look at the impacts that the floodplain at that point in time had on the transit station area. Then in 2013, we had the flood, and as you can see in the picture in the lower left-hand corner there, that's looking south on Main Street, and that area to the right is part of the area of the First and Main area, and you can see quite a bit of flows coming through there, almost submerging some of those cars. When they did the original 2008 study, we looked at options for what it would take to get that transit station out of the floodplain or pass those... take to get that transit station out of the floodplain or pass those flows through. Um, but some of that has changed since then. And in two thousand and fourteen, uh, following the flood, we began with flood recovery funding, the, uh, the Resilient Saint Vrain Project, and it began. Um, some of the things that have happened then that have been pretty significant, in two thousand and fifteen, we've talked about that before, um, the Colorado Water Conservation Board, along with CDOT, did an update of hydrology, not only on the Saint Vrain Creek, but on several of the, um, basins on the Northern Front Range, following a lot of floods we've had, and the, uh, that resulted in a significant increase in, in the defined flows of the Hundred Year Storm, going up from ten thousand cubic feet per second, which they were, up to about fifteen thousand two hundred of Main Street. So we've seen about a fifty percent increase in those flood flows. Uh, following that, uh, the state is undertaking what's called the CHAMP Project, Colorado Hazard Mapping, and, um, they, through that process, they're going to be updating the floodplain mapping, not only on Saint Vrain Creek, but Left Hand Creek, as far as it relates to Longmont, Boulder Creek, uh, the South Platte, um, many of the Northern Front Range communities. That's a, uh, a multi-year project that's underway right now, and they don't anticipate that that will end up in new FEMA floodplain mapping being completed until probably in the two thousand and nineteen or possibly even two thousand and twenty range. Um, they are using, for Longmont, for the Longmont Reach, the floodplain mapping that we developed as part of the Saint, Resilient Saint Vrain Project, which was important to us, that we didn't end up with a different model than what we were already designing around. Uh, and that is currently being reviewed by FEMA, uh, and they're working to insert that into the model that covers the rest of Boulder and Weld County, uh, for the Saint Vrain Creek. Um, Boulder County has already gone ahead and adopted the section of that new floodplain models from, uh, up above Lyons and the headwaters, down through to the upstream side of Longmont. And we're gonna be scheduling, we're working right now to schedule another open house, uh, in late August, and then in September, we would anticipate coming back to council with those. And what we would normally do on that, and what we anticipate doing here, is to have council, um, adopt that new floodplain mapping as the best available information. Uh, and that way, as things go on, we're using that mapping in advance of FEMA completing that, that, uh, formal effort. And that's what, like I said, Boulder County's already adopted that, and other communities will be doing the same. So, there's a lot on this map, but this map represents the floodplains, and we're gonna take a look at that. Um, just to get ourselves oriented here, um, Highway one-nineteen right here, Main Street, uh, Left Hand Creek comes in here, here's the BNSF Railroad right here, Sunset Street, Hoover Road, and out here to Airport Road. Um, as we take a look at this, the pink and the purple, and in some cases, that color changes, it's pink that's laid over the blue, but that pink represents the existing regulatory or effective floodplain. That's the old floodplain that's still in effect, that's based on those ten thousand CFS. This is the one that we found in two thousand and eight, when we reviewed it, was incorrect, in that it was wrong. It didn't, um, it, it misrepresented the floodplain in a lot of areas, and at that point in time, we had a lot of public meetings with people to, to inform them what the floodplain really looked like. You can see here in this downtown area, for example, it dips down there and appears to go underneath Main Street. The blue, this shade of blue, is the existing conditions. That is the new floodplain, based on those, the new hydrology, and based on the updated mapping. And so you can see, there are a lot of significant areas that are included in that that weren't in the, that aren't in the existing regulatory. There are also some areas here where it's pink, that's not then cover, and overlapping that blue, that actually aren't in the, in the effective conditions, the, the new existing conditions, my floodplain. So in a few areas, it'll actually reduce the size, but in the majority of those areas, it would, it would increase that floodplain. The turquoise here is what, with the completion of the Resilient Saint Vrain Project, that's the goal of what the floodplain would then look like. So we would be taking this approximately half-mile-wide floodplain and reducing it to the size of the creek that would carry those flows. Um, and that would remove, I think we had about five hundred to six hundred acres out of that, uh, out of that, out of the existing floodplain, and that's a significant impact on the core of the community down here. One of the things I want to talk briefly about as we look at this blue on the floodplain is some of the complexities of that, because we found, uh, and we saw it happen during the two thousand and thirteen flood, there are a lot of split flows that make that very complicated. So as it, as it comes downstream from Hoover, for example, it doesn't get under the Hoover Street Bridge, and those flows break out, overtop Hoover, and come around here. So, Saint Vrain Mobile Home Park, this commercial industrial area down here, while it, where it was flooded during the, uh, during the flood, wasn't floods coming out of the creek. These were flows that were trying to get back into the creek. And the same thing happens up here with what we call the Isaac Walton Breach and the BNSF Breach. Those flows break out of the channel and come up through here, go under the Pratt-Terry Overpass, and then come down through this area. So, even as we complete, and we'll talk about that more later, these sections of the channel down here, until we get up to this point here and fix those and stop those flows from breaking out of the channel, we don't get complete changes in the floodplain. So, there's some major areas that we have to get to, predominantly up to Sunset Street, to make some change, significant changes in this downstream, and then on the south side here, really have to get up above Hoover Road towards Lykan's Gulch to make significant changes. This is just a, a little bit of a blow-up of the, uh, the area in the downtown core area that we're working on now. Here's, uh, Main Street, um, South Pratt Parkway, uh, and you can once again see the, the pink, that's the existing regulatory. If you go in and say, "I've got a federally backed mortgage," you're, you're gonna be required to have flood insurance if you're in this area. We've been telling other people, though, "You're in the floodplain, and if you're out here, you'd be better off to get flood, flood insurance anyway, and you can go ahead and buy that. You'll actually end up paying a lower rate on it, because you're not in the floodplain yet." We spent a lot of time talking, and all that mapping was about the Hundred Year Storm, but one of the things we do also need to realize, it's not just the Hundred Year Storm where we're gonna have problems. Ten-year storm is about thirty-four hundred cubic feet per second. We've got capacity in the river to pass only about forty-five hundred before we start seeing flooding. So much above a ten-year storm, when we get into a twenty-five-year storm event or a fifty-year storm event, we will once again see significant flooding in the community. As we talked about the Resilient Saint Vrain Project, what are we trying to do with it? Protect public and, uh, private, uh, property and infrastructure? Improve transportation for emergency access. You'll remember during the two thousand and thirteen flood, we were a community that was cut in half. Um, people on the south couldn't get to the north side of town conveniently. Emergency access, um, was, was very limited and impacted. Protecting vulnerable populations throughout the community, uh, and maintaining and enhancing the, the environment, which we can do as we do this project. Um, some of the partners we've been working on, this is not something that we've been working on alone. Uh, we've got, completed the, uh, NIPA Environmental Assessment, we've worked with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on a four-oh-four permit, uh, worked with Colorado Parks and Wildlife on a Senate Bill Forty, uh, approval and permit. We've had review by FEMA, EPA, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, uh, SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, the Army Corps of Engineer HUD, Boulder County, Weld County, public and property owners. Uh, the number of meetings that we've had, we've worked very hard at trying to stay in contact with the community and property owners, uh, over the several years that we've been working on that project and have taken numerous steps to do that. Uh, as I mentioned, right now, we're working on getting ready to schedule, uh, for late August, uh, probably, as the dates we're currently looking at, another, uh, public open house meeting. So, as far as an update on where we are with the, um, with the project, Sunset Street Bridge is complete, and the Main Street Bridge is complete. Uh, we're still working with the artist on getting the art and public places installed on the bridge, and are excited that that should be happening in the next couple of months. Um, under construction, we have the, um, Sandstone Ranch Reach, uh, and we've been shut down for a period of time because of the eagle nests that are out there, but the eaglets have fledged and are doing very well, as you can see here. Uh, and so work is starting to resume there. Work will continue through the fall of two thousand and eighteen with some of the plantings that have to go on to restore some of the damaged areas. We do hope, though, and are working to try and get the trail open by spring of two thousand and eighteen. Out at Sandstone Ranch, this isn't so much about, um, controlling floods, we're letting that open space flood, it's, it's restoring, uh, some of the areas of the creek. Uh, the creek moved, as you all are aware, about a quarter mile, and in that new area, we're having to do a lot of bank stabilization in some places to protect roads. Um...
Excuse me, could, people in the audience, if you want to talk, could you go out in the hall, please? You're kinda disrupting the presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and in this area, you can see that, that here's a bank where we're working and being in a lot of riprap to try and stabilize that, protect that. This is actually one of the reaches that, that one of the things we're protecting is the eagle nest and the tree that it's sitting in. Uh, but as we do that, then we come in and cover that riprap, and this is the bank. Actually, we've still got topsoil and vegetation that's gonna go on that, so that we end up with, once again, coming back to a natural area in there, um, and, and burying that riprap. Um, as I said, the creeks moved, and the new pedestrian bridge over that new flow line of the creek is pretty massive. It passes those, those flows and is, uh, a, a pretty impressive site and is installed out there. Like I said, we're working to try and get that section done and open by, for spring. Uh, funding for this, this portion of the project has come through our FEMA PAP, our Public Assistance Alternative Procedures, um, project, uh, with the state and Longmont furnishing the local match. Also, under construction, we have City Reach One. Here it's a little different. Here, we're working to protect, uh, for protection of the community and resiliency, uh, along with trail restoration, still doing it in an environmentally sensitive approach. Uh, this section of the, uh, of the creek will, um, this section of the work right here will go a long way towards protecting, even just with this construction complete, protecting our wastewater treatment plant. You'll remember that during the flood, our wastewater treatment plant was, had to be evacuated for two days and was shut down, and we had raw sewage flowing into the creek through that point in time. Here, we're increasing capacity here and channelizing those flows and protecting that plant from future flood events. So that will be a, a very important aspect of it. You'll see a lot of work as you drive over Martin Street or Main Street, and you see some of these steps, little drop structures going in. Uh, we had the Bonus Ditch, which was the relatively large, ten-foot-high dam. It wasn't fish-passable or boat-passable. It was washed out during the flood, and instead of, of, of putting in that large structure again, we're putting in a series of, of drops, and this has been done, uh, working closely with, with David Bell and his staff in Natural Resources for the coordination with the Dickens Farm Nature Area, which is gonna be developed on the north side of it. And I think that is going to be an incredible new connection of lower downtown to the Saint Vrain Creek, and having the ability to come in there and actually interact with the creek and, and float down through there in higher flows. It, it may be a, a bit of a kayak course, but most of the time, it'll be more of a lazy river, but it will be a, a very unique and, and, and great area for, uh, for Longmont, as well as protecting, uh, the community from flood flows. As we go on, what's next? The next step that we're gonna be taking on in this series of maps, once again, here's Main Street. The highlighted area is the South Pratt Parkway Bridge. Uh, we're a little behind on that. We thought we'd be ba, back out, uh, to bid sooner. We've been working, um, uh, on a lot of utility relocates under there. You might have seen a lot of work going on. LPC has been over there, boring, uh, to try and get, um, utilities relocated in advance of the bridge project. Um, we anticipate the, uh, project going out to bid then in, uh, uh, August, and would be starting up in the fall and continuing on through two thousand and seventeen and eighteen. This is funded, uh, through the city's street fund, and also with FEMA, uh, pre-disaster mitigation grant funding that we received, that went towards both the Main Street project, Main Street Bridge and the South Pratt Parkway Bridge. We actually got that before the flood, three million dollars that applied towards those two projects.
So I got a question. Isn't the, the South Platte Parkway Bridge, that's the real high bridge that goes over the train tracks and everything?
That's the Pratt-Terry Overpass. That's the overpass. This is the bridge. The bridge is where it comes down and narrows down. We only have pedestrians on one side. We don't have any bike lanes, and actually, one of the things we're doing, this has given us a great opportunity, too. That bridge was in, was planned for replacement before the flood, but it will be pa, with a bridge that will pass that, but we'll also have bike lanes on both sides. And then one of the other areas that we're looking at, our staff is working on, is looking at that Pratt-Terry Overpass, and we think we can do some restriping work on there to install bike lanes on that, which would become a great access from downtown to the, not only the greenway, but then over the Pratt-Terry Bridge, which will have now much improved pedestrian and bicycle access to get down to some of that commercial area down there. So we're trying to coordinate some of these things and see how we can improve access to the greenway, as well as protecting the community. So we're excited about that, that project. Next up, two A. Breach two A goes from, uh, Main Street to about halfway between the Pratt-Terry Overpass and the BNSF Railroad Bridge. Um, works through there. We're currently reviewing sixty percent plans on that. Um, this is a portion of the project that will be funded, once again, by FEMA PAP. One of the things that, that we've been very fortunate on is that on the Sandstone Reach and City Reach One, we got construction bids that were much better than our original, um, construction costs, uh, or construction estimates. So our dollars are going farther than we thought they were. And so now, we're, we're in the process, actually, we've been working with FEMA to change the description of our project and include this portion of the project in it. So we'll have FEMA PAP funding that'll be paying for a large portion of this, some of it with the state and Longmont covering those matches. A portion of that comes, though, from our Longmont Storm Drainage Bond that voters approved, our twenty-million-dollar bond that's funded by our, uh, Storm Drainage Utility, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit. Uh, that's gonna be about seven-point-three million dollars for that one. Uh, our goal is to get out to, to bid on that towards the very late part of this year, uh, hopefully with construction starting in eighteen and nineteen. We're, uh, like I said, going through permitting process right now, um, and, and are reviewing sixty percent plans. We're also starting to work with, we have a couple of pieces of property that we have to acquire up here. A large portion of this section of what most people perceive as the greenway is actually owned by private property. Um, and so we're having to acquire some of that and working with property owners on that. Excuse me, wrong way. One of the questions we get a lot is, "What is this going to look like?" And so we, we had these renderings done, and these are artist renderings, but they were done by, developed from our construction grading plans and the actual landscape plans. And so they are very accurate. And this is on, so we're right now kinda hovering over Main Street, looking towards the South Pratt Parkway Bridge, and this is the old Royal Mobile Home Park, that parcel of land that the city bought after the flood. You can see some of the old pads where mobile homes used to be, and the roads that came through that Mobile Home Park. And then here is, here is the, uh, the, the creek channel. Um, and we've talked about the fact that this will change. The channel is gonna change. We do need to take out some of the tree, a lot of the trees, in this area, and you can see here, this is what that channel then starts to look like. Uh, while we've removed these trees, we're keeping these in, we're doing new plantings in here, and we actually end up with a much wider greenway area of, uh, environmental area through this. Uh, you can see some of this Mobile Home Park land is left, and we have the ability to either do something with that, or very likely sell that back to somebody in the private sector, um, for that. But just kinda going back and comparing the width there of the channel, we end up with a lot wider channel area and green area through that. Uh, here, we're kinda hovering over South Pratt Parkway and looking towards the BNSF Railroad Bridge. Uh, this is, uh, Boston cul-de-sac that comes down through here. This is an area that, if you walk down there, it was damaged pretty severely by the flood. There's still a lot of gravel in there that we've never gotten out, a lot of rock, that's a lot of weeds, a lot of those trees are already damaged and dead. Uh, so there's a lot of work to do in here, and much the same, we'll end up with a much wider section of channel right here. Fewer trees, more grasses and more, um, shrubs and other, um, greenway environment. This is a section that we've talked about- talked about being the walled section, and I think we've sometimes misled people on that. Because you can see with the width of the channel versus the slopes, these are, these are two tiers of walls that'll step down to get us the capacity to prevent us from having to go farther out and impact private property with the channel. But they're only about five feet each high. This is the material that we're going to be using to construct those walls, so it's very attractive. There'll be a portion of that wall along this side for a portion of that, of that area. But it's not, when we call it a walled channel, I've kind of tried to quit doing that because I think people think of Cherry Creek. And this isn't anything like that in through there. One of the other things I do want to be clear on is that we are following the city's own requirements and guidelines. And just as a developer who was taking out trees that they weren't replacing, would be required to pay into the tree fund, this project funding is going into that tree fund. So that can support other work in the community, whether it's treatment with EAB, protection, or expansion of our urban forest and other areas where, where we can get that benefit out of those and still have capacity in the channel to pass those flows safely through the community. Okay? So that takes us 2A. Green here is 2B, the next reach up. And that goes from this point that's about halfway between South Parkway and BNSF Railroad, under the BNSF Railroad, to a point about 400, about, it's about 800 feet upstream of BNSF Railroad Bridge. And this is an area where we're actually flattening out the curve there of this. The funding for this is from Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery Funds, that the city has received through our Boulder Collaborative that we've been working with, Kathy Fedler, really leading that, that effort and, and working with that. So we have about $8.78 million of HUD funding that comes into this area. Construction is going to be a little bit behind the 2A, but not much, with construction, once again, occurring in 2018 and 19. One of the real challenges in this area, and that is, once again, that's funded, because we have those CDB-GDR funds. But one of the real challenges in here is, right in the middle of this, is the BNSF Railroad Bridge. And that is one of the large obstructions, how narrow and small that bridge is, that causes these flood flows to pass up and around. So that's sitting right in the middle of this thing. And that's a real critical piece of infrastructure. We're currently working with BNSF, and we actually submitted to them, and I was communicating with them today, and we expect their comments back in about two weeks, the initial set of a 10% conceptual design plan on the BNSF Bridge. And this is the first time that we've actually got them to actually sit down with us, start working towards this, and looking at plans. BNSF has been very clear. They're not looking to participate in funding. That bridge they have there works for them very well. But they will work with us on the replacement of the bridge. So we've, we've, we've made that next step. So the cost of this bridge is going to be fairly substantial. We anticipate, and, and all we have at this point in time is a set of 10% plans that we've submitted. But it's one that actually has to be constructed in line, because you're not going to come down here and shut down the railroad tracks for months and months while you're doing this. So it's a, it's a very complicated piece of construction, and will require a lot of coordination with this Reach 2B project. But I said, they are communicating with us. We've been working, we've also been working with RTD, because this relates to the transit area and how that happens. We have some Dr. Cog funding that Sean's been working with us to get. And so this is a piece that's identified as partially funded. We anticipate that's going to be about $5 million. We're still having to figure out how that works. We're exploring whether this can be funded as part of the CDB-GDR funds, if we can make those funds go further. We're looking at a lot of different options on that. But we've at least got BNSF at the table with us right now. And that's been a step that we haven't achieved prior to this point in time. So from there upstream, the next portion shown in blue goes from there up, probably through the Boston Avenue stretch. This is a stretch that we're working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and their 205 program on. And quite some time ago, city council approved an agreement with them, where we actually have participated in, in the cost of the study to look at this. And we anticipate that that will be done by the end of the year. And everything that we've seen to date in working with them indicates that we're going to get a favorable issue, and that then they would accept this, as the 205 program allows up to $10 million for a project matched by local of $5 million. And so this isn't where they're going to give us the money, though. This is one where they would actually come in and construct that portion of the project. We're hoping that construction would probably be in the 2019, 2020 range. But we're going to be trying to push hard to get that done. Like I said, we'll know more towards the end of the year. As we talk about funding, because we don't have that wrapped up, I'm identifying this as unfunded with that $10 million. But we're working towards that source. Oh, wrong way again. Sorry. The Boston Avenue Bridge is next one, another bridge that doesn't pass those storms. This is a bridge that during the flood was plugged up with a lot of debris and caused a lot of problems. Once again, we get that Isaac Walton split that brings those flows around here, caused all that damage up in this area and downstream. That is in our CIP, and in the CIP that you will be reviewing later this year with funding in 2020, funded out of the city's street fund at a tune of about $3.8 million. So that's in the funded category. The next up is a section of the Isaac Walton Pond Reach. And during the flood, the flood blew through the berm along through here, came out and around, and caused, wreaked havoc up and through this area, and caused a lot of damage. This is an area that I would say we're calling partially funded, because depending on how the bids go on this section here, that's being funded by the PAP, we actually think we could have about $2 million more of PAP funding that we could stretch all the way up to here. And that's real critical, as we'll talk later, for some of the transit area improvements, to try and stop the flooding that occurs down in this area right through here. But that is to the point where our funding goes. You will remember when we came to council right after the flood and talked to council about the Storm Drainage Bond, and we talked about two options of whether we should go out for the $20 million bond, or whether we should go for the $40 million bond at that time. We made the decision to go for the $20 million bond, and we said we'd look for other funding sources. We have been looking for other funding sources, and we've been getting some of them. But I think at some point in time, probably as we get bids on early, in early next year, and this area, this area, get resolution on that BNSF Railroad Bridge, we might be time to come back and talk about whether we're going to need to look at another bond through the Storm Drainage Fund to continue these efforts and get us upstream and complete this section of the project. It'll also depend on whether or not that Army Corps of Engineers project comes through. Because if that doesn't come through, then once again, we're short $10 million here, just in getting that far up. So that's going to be something that we're most likely going to have to talk about. And I know council is challenged with having to look at a lot of different things, but this is one that we need to remember and think about as we move on. Upstream of BNSF, in this, in this graphic, here's, or upstream of Sunset, here's the BNSF Railroad, here's Hoover, St. Verane Creek comes through here, here's Sunset. Once again, as I indicated, you know, the, the question is on whether this will be funded by the Army Corps, whether we still have some funding needs that is unfunded along this Isaac Walton to do that. But then up above this area, probably talking about $66 million to get us all the way out to Airport Road. And this can happen in phases and can look at that. So we talked about the importance of this reach right around through here, as we get close to Hoover, these split flows here that come down and overtop Hoover and are trying to get back St. Verane, that's the area that floods all of this area down here. This portion in blue up here, if we get up to Sunset, we take this portion out of the floodplain. But all of this down in through here, that's solved by this split flow condition or improvements to the channel. And we've talked about the alternatives that we have in those areas where we've looked at a, a split flow, so that we don't have to do so much widening of the channel here. Next week, you actually will have an annexation in front of you for some of the Golden Nelson property, and we've been working with them on this. And those annexation agreements acknowledge this project and agree that they would dedicate easements for the construction of the split flow through that. So we've been lucky working with property owners, trying to address some of those concerns. But that'll be some of the next upstream reaches there. Did I get everything you wanted covered there, Dale? Good. So now we're going to focus back on the transit area, and we'll get done with this and, and let David talk about the transit station. As we come back down in here, once again, BNSF Railroad here through there, as I talked about, in 2008, we looked at how you would get that transit station out of there. And the, the designs of that study at that point in time said, well, you'd, you'd have to put two real large channels to carry not only the flood flows through that area, but also the local flows that come down from, from Longmont, trying to get to the St. Verane Creek River. So, and we talked, and the options were either do that and pass those flows through that area, which take up a lot of land, create some cost, and end up with some throwaway improvements that might not be then needed once this is done, or get this Resilient St. Verane project completed. So as we look at that, this is just a little table. With the existing conditions that we have right now, we have about 2,840 CFS that are flowing through this area here. These are flood flows that are, that are passing through here. Remember the picture we looked at at the very start? Those are flows that are coming three feet, four feet deep through that area, right through there, that impact development. So that happens. If we replace the BNSF Railroad Bridge alone, that only lowers it to 2055. And this assumes that we have got the channel improvements that we're working on 2A and 2, 2A, that we've got the improvements up to the BNSF Railroad Bridge done, okay? That lowers it to about 2055. If we do the BNSF Railroad Bridge and Boston Avenue Bridge, it only lowers it to about 2026. What happens is, when you get the BNSF Railroad Bridge, the Boston Avenue Bridge, and the repair of that Isaac Walton berm that stops those flows from breaching through that pond and coming around, is a point when you get those flows down to probably a manageable level of 348. Completing the Resilient St. Verane all the way to Sunset is the only way we tighten not only that transit area, but the rest of that core of downtown and Main Street out of the floodplain. And that's the completion of all of these steps of projects that we were talking about, not all of which are funded at this point in time. But the good news is, we've gotten further with them than we originally anticipated that we would. So in that regard, we've come along pretty well. What does it take to stay the course? Like I said, we got a lot of partners in this project. We work with, on a daily basis, and thank heavens for Peter and Charlie, who are, who are doing that coordination and work with us with, with FEMA, and Kathy Fedler and Molly, who are working with HUD. We're working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on that 205 program to see what we can. We continue to work with the state, Longmont, BNSF. We need to look at those options. We need to figure out additional funding for those areas from the BNSF Bridge up to Lykan's Gulch to Hoover, to deal with that stretch. And then ultimately, from Lykan's Gulch up to Airport Road, perhaps to, to make sure that we have Airport Road available as a corridor during a flood area. We've got some options on that. That'd be kind of on the far out end of that project. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I was just curious, did the BNSF Bridge have any damage yet with the flood?
Not substantially. It, we've talked to them, because as you may recall, with the, with the bonus ditch, that St. Verane Creek not only moved horizontally, you know, it moved up through those ponds, it's no longer where it used to be. But it also moved a lot vertically, because you had that, that bonus ditch that dropped the creek about eight feet. And so we started to lose, it started to cut grade going back upstream. And we've talked to BNSF. So far, it hasn't reached a grade cut all the way up there that could start to, to lower on that. But substantially, they, they lost a lot of track. They lost track upstream of the, or north of the bridge that they had to replace, but, but not that. And as I said, they're a private company. When they look at it, they're saying, we got bridges that carry a lot more traffic, train traffic than this one does. As many trains as we think come through Longmont. When you go into the Midwest or in the South, there are areas that have three, four, and five times the amount of trains, or 10 times the number of trains that we have coming through. And they say that's where their priorities are.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Nick, can, I get this question all the time from folks about why we're going, it looks like we're going to the west. And I, I know the answer, and I try to explain it. Can you briefly tell us why we're going from east to west and not west to east?
You bet.
In other words, you're going from downstream to upstream?
We're going from downstream to upstream. And that is because, as we look at that floodplain...
This question comes up all the time.
It does. And we need to build capacity down here to carry that upstream pipe. You got to build it from downstream to upstream. In the, in the work we did in 2008, there were some options that said, yeah, you could probably do some of the upstream stuff before. But that was before, that was when we were dealing with a 10,000 CFS flow, not with a 13,000, up to 15,000 CSFS flow. The, that 30% to 50% increase has made a huge change. So we're building capacity down here. I think in addition, we're starting with this highly-developed area of our core of downtown and trying to protect that, where we saw some of the greatest damage that we saw during the flood and working there. But predominantly, it's building capacity downstream and moving upstream so that we can catch that.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
You bet.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So we're just short $66 million? That's all we need to find, Nick?
That's, that's all. Write a check.
No problem. All right. I just wondered, that doesn't include, what is the total cost? If you go, do you have that number?
I don't have it off the top of my head. It, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $100 million, as we, as we talk about everything that we've spent. When you look at the $28 million of the PAP and all, and all of that, it's probably a little, it's somewhere in that neighborhood of about that. I apologize. I don't have that off the top.
Oh, that's okay. I just think that would be an interesting fact to have.
130, 140 is the number that we...
130, 140?
It's, it's been higher than that. It's, it's been a huge amount of work.
Yeah, I know. Well, you've done a great job.
So when you, when you put 130 or 140 in perspective, and we're saying 66 short, it's a lot of progress.
That's right. That's right. And, you know, it's fun to watch. It's fun to watch it happen, as you guys have, have made progress up and down the corridor. And good work is all I got to say.
One of the things I, when I was talking about the channel project, I was ignoring the bridge, the bridge cost that you had in there.
You guys keep doing the good work.
Because you had, you started adding Main Street Bridge in there, South Parkway Bridge in there. I was forgetting those, those costs in there. There's a lot of coordination with those. And like I said, we're also doing coordination with other aspects.
Keep track of that. That'd be, that'd be good, a good number to have.
I think, I think when you look at the, when you look and see what's going to happen with that nature area downstream of Main Street, you're going to see something that's going to be a real game changer to the, to the community there. I'm, I'm excited about, about seeing what that will look like.
It'll be awesome.
Councilmember Christensen?
I just have two questions. So how long would it take, will, do you think it will take to replace the BNSF Bridge? And where are they going to go meantime, first of all? And secondly...
Where they're going to go is nowhere at all, actually. It becomes a very interesting design approach. You literally come in and have to build this in line. And, and it's, and it becomes interesting, because, as I said, we're moving this out, and you think about what we did with the Main Street Bridge. It used to be this long, and now it's that long.
Yeah, yeah.
A significant part of this new BNSF Bridge is, is way north of where the existing bridge is. But so you come in and literally are drilling in piers through the tracks and setting those, so that you can then come in and place the new structure on top of those, and then excavate out from underneath it. So that there are only limited times when the, when the trains are shut down. Now, you'll have blocks... Now, you'll have blocks of windows of time when the trains are shut down. That's why we've got another engineering firm in here that has a great deal of specialty in railroad bridges that's working on the design issue. It's a very complex issue because it's not where they're going to say, fine, we're just going to reroute train traffic to another state for that period of time. So it's, it actually is inline construction that will have some periods of shutdown.
Wow. That's really amazing.
And so, and so with that, we have to try and get that done in this 2018, 19 timeframe when we're doing the rest of this. And what's pushing us on that is the timeframes and constraints we have on the CDBGDR funds that have to be expended by 2019, July 30th. We will ask them for an extension, but we're working under an assumption that we won't get one, and are trying to push it hard to get done with that. So there will be a significant amount of work happening in this area from Main Street up to here in these next 2018 and 19. In that two-year period, there's going to be a lot of work going on there.
Okay. The second question is, so we're talking about the Airport Road that is going to be another 66, or 66 million. But past Airport Road, I know we fixed the dam, which was really astonishing. What do we have to do between Airport Road and the dam? Do we, what, who's involved in that? Is Boulder County involved? Is Lyons involved? Is everybody, everybody's involved?
Boulder County is involved in that, and we've been working jointly with Boulder County on some efforts that they're doing. We've been, they've allowed us to review their plans and talk to them about that and what they're doing upstream on that. But then we also have the Heron Lake Channel, which Dale is much more familiar with, that you could talk about briefly.
You were all there at the opening. So yeah, the Heron Lake Channel was probably the, the main flood control project that we built out near Pelopons in Heron Lake, and that really protects those west neighborhoods, the Greens, Champion Greens, and the Valley.
Okay, well, thank you.
If I could have just one minute, I want to acknowledge Nick and the work he's been doing.
Absolutely.
It's, it's really been, where is he? It's really been 24/7 on him. And he is a great, a great trooper. I also like it that he can get up here and make a presentation and not get teary-eyed like I do. So that, I'm really trying to learn that from him. I don't know if I'll ever get there, but I got to acknowledge the work that he's doing.
We could call it the Wolf from Wall.
There you go. Not the Wailing Wall.
It really is a large team effort. David Bell, and there's, there's a huge number of people that are involved that are the only way this thing makes it work. And I could, I have purchasing, our purchasing staff that's, that's gotten these jobs out to bid for us and under contract. This is something that I talk about, David and Char, or Peter and Charlie, who coordinate this work with FEMA that has gotten us the money that we can actually go out and spend, and then is getting that cash flow back into us. That's a huge issue with finance. Our natural resources staff has been greatly involved with us throughout the whole thing. They're just a lot. They're LPCs working on utility relocates throughout the thing. It's, it's, it's one that takes a pretty big village to get this done.
Okay, thank you. Let's, today, are we ready to move on to the next section now? All right, can we take a five-minute recess? We can stretch our legs, huh?
[inaudible]
Mayor David Starnes, redevelopment manager, will present on the first and main transit-oriented development strategies update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. David Starnes with redevelopment. So tonight, we're excited to present an update on the first and main transit-oriented development strategies. I'll have a brief kind of background overview, then I'll go and turn it over to our consultant, Economic and Planning Systems, to provide the meat of the discussion in terms of the update and some items that we're seeking council direction on. So just as a quick primer, as you may all recall, in terms of the history of RTD and FastTrax and Longmont's involvement, back in 2004, Metro Denver approved the FastTrax funding. From 2004 to 2008, city staff and the policymakers initiated initial planning for a station in Longmont. It was originally located, specifically located at Twin Peaks Mall, then downtown and the Sugar Mill locations were added. In 2008, RTD set aside 17 million in early FastTrax funding for the first and main transit station as part of the full completion of the Northwest Rail project. In 2012, we went through a process of our first and main station transit and revitalization plan. And this is the master plan vision for the first and main station and how we, the community, envision this station area building out with RTD and potential redevelopment and transit-oriented development with, around the station. In 2014, the Northwest Area Mobility Study was completed. This was a study that was an RTD-sponsored event to look at options of providing rail or rail-like bus service in the Northwest area due to, due to projected delay of rail service in the corridor. And so both this study and the first and main plan had impacts of the final station location in Longmont. And then BRT options were, were added, looking at Kaufman Street for more efficient transit service in the future. So back in 2015, as you may recall, city staff presented options to council to consider regarding the preferred station location layout. And originally, the original RTD plans contemplated a stationary that included surface parking and bus rail components. One option presented was to pursue, pursue a transit-oriented development at this station that would implement the vision of the goals in the first and main plan. So council, back in 2015, directed staff to hold off on the design for the existing station area plan and explore a transit-oriented development plan to redevelop the site in partnership with RTD. So this led, has led us to, in April 2016, to engage the services of Economic and Planning Systems to help us evaluate how this station could look, as well as conduct a financial analysis of the associated estimated cost to implement this plan and some financing mechanisms to help the city fund the transit-oriented development station. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Andrew Knutson with EPS.
All right. Thank you, David. Mayor, members of council.
Oh, and I just, sorry.
Please.
Just want to say one thing. As part of the presentation, there's three items that we're looking for council for direction on tonight, and just to kind of have, keep this in the back of your mind. One is the preferred stationary design alternative. Two is options for funding of the city portion of the transit-oriented development to explore further. And the third option is funding options to recoup the city funding of transit-oriented development to explore. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, David. Mayor Coombs, members of council, Andrew Knutson with Economic and Planning Systems. The last time we were here was when we were talking about the comprehensive plan and some affordable housing issues. Tonight, we'll be talking about urban infill, specifically around the TOD. Economic and Planning Systems does have extensive experience, specifically focused on market analysis, redevelopment, market pressure. How do you take advantage of that? And how do you catalyze certain parts of, of a community, specifically urban areas like the one we're looking at tonight? So with that, we will dive into these questions. In terms of the material we've covered tonight, you can see it here in front of you, the stationary, the design. We had MIG, an urban design consultancy, provide, we spent quite a bit of time with them looking at a development program. We have images of that here shortly. Two different options. Then we move into costs and revenues, look at a pro forma, and then move back to those same questions David just posed in terms of the three areas we're looking for direction on. This is the 2012 first and main station TOD plan. This is where we were starting, and we ultimately, I don't know if I, I don't have a, okay, perfect. This plan, both plans, the one that's shown on the screen today, as well as what we're seeing, what we're showing shortly in terms of the revised plan, quite a bit of focus on Kaufman and First in terms of the transit priorities. First ultimately is where the train will come in. It's the location for the platform. That doesn't change. Kaufman, an interesting opportunity to create a bus transfer facility so that we've got the bus and the rail immediately adjacent to each other, easy connections between the passengers. And Kaufman becomes a very galvanizing point that the design, all the design concepts stemmed off of. This plan had quite a bit of focus around Second and Main. We looked at things and decided that the market, it was doing well. Cheese Shop was just underway when we started, and thought that what was more interesting was kind of the interior where the market wasn't necessarily going to move. We thought Main Street generally strong, and we wanted to focus right in here. And the plans that we will see shortly, what's going on? Thank you, if you can help me. This is the program that we looked at. We do have four specific development sites within each of the two, the two alternatives. We've got two residential, two residential pads, one office pad, and then one very small retail area. The market is strong generally on residential. Office, the market isn't as strong as there is a need for an opportunity for Class A office space near downtown. We wanted to pursue that because we think it's a great catalytic impact. Retail is very small. We're looking that, for that to be a street activator, but not, not, not a lot of it. You can see the program there. We've got 120 units on one pad, 70 units on the other, 40,000 square feet of office space, and then a very small pad with 5,000 square feet of retail on the first floor and 5,000 square feet of on top, square feet on top of that as office. This is the first alternative, and there's a lot, a lot of information going on in this plan. I'm going to toggle back and forth between alternative A, alternative B, and a perspective. The perspective here shows Kaufman headed south and First to the right. You can see the rail coming in with a platform right there on the right side, and Kaufman headed south of First as this transit corridor, this transit, the whole street becomes a transit center. And we're using the right-of-way as the transit center, which is the progressive direction that transit agencies are moving, rather than to take up land off the right-of-way that could otherwise generate TOD, residential or office. The right-of-way is utilized for transfer. As part of this design, RTD was very protective of this corridor, no other traffic, you know, very limited in terms of what, the vehicular use of it, but a much more efficient use of the overall area and a recreation of the street grid. But also, what was very helpful is Kaufman connects from this location to the north to, and, and we're taking the buses off Main and creating a Kaufman connection parallel to Main from the south to the north. Going back to the site plans, we have alternative A. You can basically see the brown, brown development pads are the combination of office and residential with a very small retail pad right up next to the platform. We've moved the parking structure around just to test different alternatives. We, this is, these are the best two out of about 36 that we evaluated. We won't be going through the other 34. But we looked north of Main, we looked over by the Cheese Shop, we looked up by Second, and ultimately, it all made sense to the design team and RTD, city staff, that, that the, the focus become around these four development pads and a parking structure that either would be at this location or this location. So moving forward, moving into the costs and revenues, we have five drivers of cost: land, relocation, parking, onsite, and offsite infrastructure. Another big question that we had to spend a fair amount of time was apportionment of costs between RTD and the city. Working first on the apportionment issue, a lot of numbers here in the table, a lot of very detailed calculations of land area... of very detailed calculations of land area, land area needed for RTD to accomplish its mission related to transit, land area allocated to the city in terms of its mission to activate the area and create TOD. At the end of the day, look at the red. I've tried to highlight as much as I can in red. That's the thing to focus on. RTD will be picking up 46% of the land costs, city 54%. What are the land costs? You can see here, they range between $4 and $5 million. This is data right out of the county assessor. We've added a 30% contingency to these costs to, to adjust for market pressure since the last time these were evaluated by the assessor. But it's pretty straightforward and very transparent, which is what we've always communicated to all of the various parties involved. One thing to just point out, the $4 to $5 million assumes that the land associated with the drawings that we were just showing is all that's involved. To the extent that the city or RTD wants to expand the area, we do have the 119 study that's underway. It may be a good opportunity. Obviously, the land costs go up. Relocation and structured parking. The Uniform Act from 1970 requires any, any projects with federal dollars to provide relocation assistance to businesses or residents in an area. We don't have federal dollars here, but RTD, as a matter of policy, adheres to the Uniform Act on any project. So the, the total project costs include $700,000 to $150,000 for relocation efforts. Structured parking. Right now, we have 300 spaces in the structure for transit users. We also have 70 spaces in the structure for the office users. We think the market is strong enough that the apartments can self-park as structured parking. The office market is not that strong. So we are discounting the land value and also providing that parking, and that would be a cost to the city. Also something to think about, as that came up in the conversations, specifically with DDA staff, it might make sense to oversize this structure and activate downtown. There's also caught, you know, the shared, sharing of the spaces, particularly when you think about time of day, days of the week, that also will help. But this could become an asset in terms of utilization of downtown. Total costs, 3.9, 3.8 million for 370 spaces. Onsites, 5.6 to 6.2 million. We've got the details there if anyone wants to look at them, but basically, this involves the reconstruction of the street grid in this location. Offsites, we've spent quite a bit of time integrating this effort with the slides that we just saw from Public Works. And basically, we have a total cost of 4.47 million, of which most of is funded, 18.6 is not funded. And if, to the extent we need to integrate this data with what we just heard, I think there are reaches that are outside the sphere of influence that may not have to be addressed in order for these project, these improvements to go forward. We need to get the engineers to weigh in on what I just said. But these numbers have been vetted very closely by town, city staff, and we need to, we've got 47 total, of which 18.6 need to be funded. Summary of costs, there's a lot of fine print on this table, but the important thing is to look at the, what we have highlighted with the circles. About $20 million of cost for the TOD, to the extent that we want to create this constant, this node of activity with the residential and the office and the transit corridor and the platform, $20 million. That corresponds to about $90 million of real estate value. This $20 million then is coupled with 47 of offsite costs related to the flood mitigation for a total of 70, 65 to 72 million dollars. Those are the figures in red. On the right side of the table, we apportion it by RTD and city, and what you have in green are city costs of about 4.9 million, RTD, a funding commitment from RTD of 17 million, and then offsite costs related to the floodway, that what we've just heard, there are a variety of sources, federal, state, local, some city, hopefully, some from Dr. Cog, what have you, that, that will need to be amalgamated to be able to make the improvements. But those are shown in dashed, the dashed green line to reflect the variety of sources that collectively we'll be, we'll be looking for. The most important thing to, to keep in mind is that we have 4.9 from the city, 17 from RTD, covering the costs for the TOD, generating about $90 million worth of real estate value. In terms of revenues and where to, where to look for revenues to offset these costs, we've got four different options. Traditional sources in the form of land, public financing sources in the form of a URA, a JID, a bid, things like that. What we've titled unique sources, such as the Denver TOD Fund or the Longmont Affordable Housing Fund, and then direct investment. And by direct investment, we're looking at either city, CIP, for example, general fund, as well as RTD direct investment in the form of the 17 million dedicated from the FastTrack funds. Traditional land sales, we've got the detail there. Part of what we try to do is convey the amount of transparency in the analysis and the thoroughness of all the factors considered. We won't be going through these tables. If there are questions, we can certainly answer them at a follow-up meeting. $2.3 million is the number to keep track of. The city can generate $2.3 million in land, in revenue from land sales with the creation of the grid, the installation of infrastructure, the entitlements, and then the creation of pad-ready sites. So approximately half of the $5 million upfront dollars can be recouped from land sales. TIF, we spent quite a bit of time looking at the URA option for tax increment financing. Generally, once things are up and running, $650,000 a year of revenue to the URA from these improvements. There's a couple options in terms of what, of how to work with the delineation of the URA boundary, either modifying the existing urban renewal authority and establishing a separate clock for these development sites, or creating a new urban renewal area with the boundaries focused on this core area. It's important that either option does, is subject to the recently adopt, is subject to the recently adopted HB 151348. Other comments on public financing, there is, in addition to the URA, you could consider the general improvement district, metro district, special improvement district, or an expansion or of the existing DDA. We looked at all of these. Ultimately, the URA is a much more powerful tool and works with the existing boundaries that have been set up and lends itself to, it's generally just much more impactful. So that's what we have focused on. The unique sources, the Denver TOD Fund. This fund is, has been created, started in the City and County of Denver, four sites in the City and County of Denver, enables organizations, whether it be municipalities or nonprofits, to move in. As transit moves towards certain submarkets, it enables these jurisdictions to acquire lands, in theory, and actually effectively, prior to the escalation that often comes with transit. It's been a very effective fund and very effective tool. It is a loan and requires repayment within five years. The other very interesting source might be the City of Longmont Affordable Housing It could front some of the dollars. Some portion of the units would have to be set aside for affordable housing. It could be a logical place to do it, given the fact that the housing that is there, a small number of units, but the units that are there are generally affordable, reduces the burden on the city CIP. Ultimately, will need to be an extended conversation between city staff in terms of what percentage of the units, how much of the fund, what types of deed restrictions, but it's a resource that should, should be considered. The revenue summary. So revenue sources, land sales of 2.3 million, RTD at 17, public financing. When the URA revenues are totaled, and, and the city is fully reimbursed for all of its expenses, so in addition to the 2.3 for land, the balance up to 4.9 from the URA, there's an additional surplus of 13, of 11.1. Total URA proceeds are 13.8. 11.1 of those would be non-designated and could be used for floodway improvements or any other type of, we need to verify through URA regulations, the eligible costs, and the geography for those costs, but it becomes a revenue source that the city can apply to its needs, as long as it's consistent with the URA regulations. So the potential terms, and this is kind of, on the right side of the screen, is kind of the packaging of a lot of different moving pieces. Total project costs for this redevelopment area, 20 million. City portion upfront, 4.9. Revenue attributed to land, 2.3. URA revenues in the first 10 years cover the rest of the city investment, bringing the city's net out-of-pocket expenses to zero. Years 11 through 25, the URA generates a surplus of 11.1 million. In addition, there's the 17 million from RTD. All of this comes together, creating a real estate valuation of between 85 and 90 million Just a few more slides for this presentation. The 4.9, this is a potential way to fund it from the CIP, looking at annual appropriations between 1 and 1.4 million. Doesn't have to all hit at once. Also, very important, this goes, this is like the first, the 10 pages of any market study we ever do, just to highlight, as any entity moves into development, there are inherent risks. Some of the factors, project costs. We think we've been conservative in these costs. There's potential for cost estimates to come in higher than any kind of underwriting at the onset of a project. Timing, where are we in the market cycle? It's pretty interesting. Everyone has a different opinion on just how many innings are left in this cycle, with all kinds of analogies about double headers or extended innings or what have you. Metro area is generating 40,000 jobs a year. That does not seem, appear to be, that appears to be fairly strong, and indications continue to suggest that the economy of the front range is very strong. So, but, market cycles are tricky to predict, and that's just a factor with any real estate investment. Market conditions and the strength of any given submarket can change over time. Public perception and just the notion of what's going on with the city as moving into this arena is also a factor. There are ways to mitigate risk, and there's a lot of time and money spent on how to, on how to do risk mitigation. Cost contingencies, we've added fairly robust contingencies with factors ranging from 20 to 30%, and all of this information you're seeing today. Conservative market assumptions on absorption and, and valuation, rents, all of that, we're on the very low end of, of what's realistic. Developer partnership, one of the best ways to mitigate risk is to share it with partners, particularly if you can affiliate with partners who have a lot of experience in certain areas, that's a terrific way to reduce the city's risk. And then public outreach. Transparency is a big part of the way the city operates, the way our firm operates, and that transparency ultimately builds credibility with the public, and that's an important part of moving forward. In terms of next steps, we're looking for council direction in terms of this study, whether it be on the, the design, if you want to spend some time on that, or any of the analysis around costs, revenues, and ways to finance the project. Next, an MOU. We will work out a memorandum of understanding between the city and RTD. We'll also plan to do an infrastructure master plan. Timing on that is 2018. That's when all of the, we start to get real granular in terms of what's going on. Land acquisition slated to follow the MOU. An IGA would then follow the MOU. And then parallel activities, the floodplain mitigation, and then also the 119 BRT study. We've got the three questions that David originally posed.
I've got just one quick question. Basically, you know, the parking structure, if you look at the cost of that, you know, it's providing 370 parking spots, that's like $25,000 per parking spot. So the alternative to that would be no parking structure, but you just buy more land, because, you know, I mean, I've always been told that $4,000 is what it costs for surface street kind of parking. Is it cheaper just to buy more land for 370 as it is to build a parking structure, or?
Well, we would, the short answer is yes. It's cheaper to build the surface space than a parking structured space. However, in the long run, a lot of the vision of all of this is greater utilization of the land, creating a vibrancy that really starts to, to kick in with economic benefits related to jobs, retail spending, sense of space that then has a catalytic impact on surrounding properties.
Because it kind of condenses more people in a tighter space, basically.
Yep. And there's a ripple effect from that that is, that you can't, that can be very powerful in terms of a community's economy and ultimately fiscal position.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just had a couple quick questions. I didn't see any costs for demolition of what's there now in, in the costs that you had. Is that included in one of those?
That is not.
As we know, that can be very expensive.
That can be. I think that demolition, particularly if there's remediation involved with any of the structures or the soils, remediation can get expensive. The structures that are onsite now are generally not going to be inordinately expensive.
I really would like to see those numbers, though, because that's, that can, as we know, throw a...
Yeah. No, that's a good, good, very good suggestion, and we can add that as a line item into the analysis and ensure, particularly with the infrastructure master plan, we'll have some engineers, engineering firms on board that will have the expertise to be able to specify what that really is. And in the meantime, we can add it with a proxy, an estimate, that will be general, but will at least be a placeholder to ensure that the team has this in mind as, as we move forward.
Yeah, you could, you could estimate it if there isn't any remediation, and then maybe have a worst-case scenario as well.
Yep. I think that's a good idea.
Because we need to know that. Also, I think this is, I, at National League of Cities, this last time, I took a class on cross-sector collaboration by the Intersector Group, and this is a perfect example. I took it just because we were talking about this, we're thinking about this. And if ever there was a, an opportunity to use cross-sector collaboration, this would be it. And the thing that stuck in my mind was, you have to make sure from the very beginning that every, every sector knows exactly what their role is. And I think we just need to keep that in mind as we go forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah, oh, councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So do you have the, you had the screenshot of what the URA would be on here. My question is, we have a URA for LDDA, is that correct, with a TIF already? Is that, am I incorrect in that, or?
The, the DDA has a TIF and the URA has a TIF.
Okay, two different...
But they're distinct organizations.
Okay. So if we put a URA on this, would that overlap the TIF on the LDDA?
So the LDDA TIF, the boundary of the DDA TIF is of the, south of First Avenue. So it's just where the, actually where the rail platform would be located. So that's the extent of the southern boundary of the DDA TIF. And so what, one option, what we obviously need to evaluate is the first and main plan evaluates a TIF within the area south of that where the, where the structures are. And so I think as part of any type of URA that's adopted, certainly with the overlap, and the thing that, the reason why the DDA TIF did not raise to a favorable, a level is because that there, I think they have like 13 years left in their TIF. And so as part of any future thing, we'd have to work closely with Kimberly and DDA to evaluate that, those parcels along First Avenue, if there's any overlap at all.
And just to underscore one of the points David made, the, to the extent that the clock can be turned on at the optimal point in time, there can be a 25-year clock, whereas, not only is the existing DDA limited, but by the time this all goes vertical and hits the tax rolls, there's not going to be that much time left on that clock.
Right. We would, we would pay into their 13 years, and then, right...
And it'd be 13 minus some period of time between today and when this thing actually hits the tax rolls, which will be, you know...
So if we consider the TIF, would it be on property tax?
Yes.
Not sales?
Correct. At this point, the contemplation, the analysis was only property tax.
Okay. My one consideration about those TIFs is that we're, we're looking at housing here, and the TIF takes away... and the TIF takes away money from schools and police and fire. So, do we have any kind of estimates on what, what that would be, or is it too soon to know anything?
I think it's too soon. So as part of the compliance with HB 1348, which is the new urban renewal law, you know, we've engaged a special counsel to assist us in terms of evaluations as part of the potential River Town. And so I think as part of this discussion, this involves potential reconstitution of the URA board, and includes members of the county, school districts, and special district. And so we would certainly engage in discussion with them and negotiation about the TIF in terms of being a more proactive kind of a partnership process.
Okay. So you've considered that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see any further questions.
So I just want to come back to the, get council direction on the three items. One is in terms of the location of the, which option in terms of alternative A and alternative B. Alternative A is the, the structure parking is located more towards the rail platform along First Avenue. And alternative B, the parking structure is located more centrally along the Kaufman Street. Staff preference, and actually RTD's preference at this point, is a more centrally located garage, alternative B. But we would like to hear from council to see what you think.
Well, I think since the train's not coming to 2042, I like B just because I think it'd be more functional sooner. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. That would be my point exactly. And having, you know, needing some handicapped space from time to time for knee issues, to get closer to the bus would be better, and that would be B. And, yeah, I don't think we're ever seeing the train, so B would definitely be my, my preference.
Councilmember Pack?
Boy, such support. I like B also, but more because I think it would enhance the, the whole area as far as parking. I think it's really important, those extra spaces for commercial. We, we need that in our city. So I, I go with B as well.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I like, I like B very much. I think it's, it's a cleaner solution, and it does, well, I, I think it's a better design because it's closer to Main Street, and as Councilman Finley said, it seems closer to the, to the actual thing you have to get on, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Santos, do you have one to weigh in on this one?
I think everyone's in agreement.
Okay.
Okay, great. Next question. In terms of the city portion of the TOD funding, we've identified, or Andrew's report identified about 4.5 to 5.5 million in costs. We've identified basically four potential options in terms of this upfront funding. Obviously, it's a $21 million cost on-site. And so when you subtract out the 17 million from RTD, that leaves out 4.5 to 5.5. Currently, you know, we've mentioned the general fund, the fund balance, there's currently no funding at this point. Another potential source is the CIP through the Public Improvement Fund, which is currently unfunded in the CIP. I understand there's a lot of pressure in terms of projects there, but just want to make you aware of that. The third piece that Andrew had mentioned is potential, some funding from the city's affordable housing fund could be allocated towards land acquisition of the costs with the provision that some type of affordable housing would be provided on-site. And then the fourth option is the Denver TOD fund. This is actually a loan, so we haven't identified a source of repayment, but it could be a potential upfront source of funding, again, with the stipulation that some type of affordable housing would be provided. So we're just kind of curious to see your thoughts about things that we should explore further. We understand this is just a kind of next step in the process. You know, it would certainly involve a lot more discussion with city staff, finance, public works, and so forth.
Councilmember Pack?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Obviously, the general fund today is not, is not an option. How soon do we need this funding, upfront funding? What is the timeline?
So, I'm going to go back to, so this slide here kind of shares a table of what we could estimate at this point.
Okay.
From the CIP, how the upfront city costs could be unrolled from 2018 through 2021. And again, this is just an estimate this, at this point, but at least in terms of 2018, we've identified about 1.5 million, and this is for appraisals. The city contribution for the infrastructure master plan, land, some, some piece of land acquisition, as well as relocation assistance of impacted property owners. So, as you can see, 1.5 in 2018, 1.5 in 2019, million in 2020, and another million in 2021.
I, right, today, I would prefer the Affordable Housing Fund if, in fact, we made a commitment to restore that. And that's only because we are going to have affordable housing on the site. But also, we haven't come to this discussion yet, but we might think about the tax on marijuana fund, to see, because I don't think that's been identified yet as to what we're going to do with that going forward. The other thing is, since we are looking at affordable housing, is there any way we can partner with Boulder County in getting some grant funds through their affordable housing programs? We might look at that. I don't know if that's a possibility, but partnering with them has worked well in Lafayette and Louisville. So that would be another thing. And the other one that I was wondering if we looked at for the drainage problem, which would save money in another area, is the Urban Drainage Authority?
We're not in that already.
There's funding there?
We're not in the Urban Drainage Authority.
Oh, we're not there? Okay. Well, that answered that. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
I was just wondering if we could hear from Kathy Fedler about her opinion of the use of the housing fund, and, and different ideas on financing.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and Council, Kathy Fedler, Housing Community Investment Manager. And actually, as I was reviewing the TOD plan, it was my idea to put this in there, because I think it would be a great opportunity in a public-private partnership and public-funded development such as this to include affordable housing and/or incentivize the inclusion of affordable housing within it. So I think there's a number of ways it could be structured. Again, it depends on how much is in the fund and when it is needed, how it might go in, it could be loaned, it could be granted, but, and then obviously working out how, what percentage or what number of units you would be looking for. But I think there's a lot of flexibility that we could provide with that funds, if that's something that y'all are interested in exploring.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is it possible that we could do a mixture of all four things, just?
I would certainly think as part of the, the next step process is, you know, based on your direction, is looking at all those options, because I think it's going to require cobbling together different funding sources to implement this vision that, you know, was adopted through this first and main plan. So I think everything's on the table. But again, just in terms of understanding the CIP and the general fund, we'd have to explore that, working closely with Jim and finance.
Yeah, what I would say in the general fund and CIP, we know there's just a lot of pressures on both of those funds right now. And if you remember the conversation on where we are funding with our CIP and...
Right.
The building conversations, you know, that's going to have to be taken into consideration as we look at this. So when you say all four, I'll just tell you now, those first two are going to be tight, and we have a lot of needs that are, I just went through the budget review process, and it is immense. And as we're putting that together, we'll be presenting it to you, and we can go more in depth.
Okay.
Just wanted to be upfront on that one.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would agree with David, you know, it's, to look at all four, I know the first two are going to be very, very tight, but to look at all options would probably be the best thing to do. So, just, just...
Well, I think we all understand that the first two are very tight right now, but sometimes things change a year or so from now. And maybe, you know, we're not saying that it's equal 25% from each thing, it might be only 5% from the first two, and...
Right. I mean, we'll have to look at the different loading, you know, how you can load it, when you can time it, those pieces all make a difference.
Okay.
So, I just have one more?
Sure.
One more question, and we're seeking direction on, this is the third piece. And so this is, in terms of the ability of the city to recoup that 4.5 to 5.5 million dollar cost, that's not eligible for reimbursement via RTD. So EPS has identified some potential sources. And again, this is more tied to the ability to use tax increment financing. So we're just curious to see if that's something that you would be interested in us to further explore. I think it's good timing just because of our special counsel as part of the other potential urban area. We can evaluate the costs and benefits of how the TIF could look, whether it involves modifying the existing southeast plan to activate TIF within the first and main area, or just doing a complete new one, and also engage with the DDA in terms of that overlap in terms of property boundaries. So we just wanted to see what you guys think about exploring this further as well.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, going to modify, you might as well make a new one, especially with under the new rules and regulations for urban renewal. So I would suggest B and C, to look at those options, probably heavily focused on B.
So creating a new one, that gives you then the full 25-year timeline, because...
Correct, correct. And even if you substantially modify, like southeast, that would still give you 25 years. Because when you do activate new TIF districts, that's when the clock starts. And the southeast urban renewal, which was adopted in 2006, is just basically a toothless plan. It doesn't have that TIF teeth, so to speak. So, under both scenarios, they would, you still have 25 years.
Okay, great. Councilmember Pack?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. David, what is the difference between C and a metropolitan district?
So, C is the options that are kind of outside TIF. And the metro, the metro is ultimately controlled by a developer or a consortium of representatives of a developer. And it, it is a little premature to think about a metro at this point in time. Whereas the SID and the GID are public-controlled.
So in that case, I, I would agree with Councilman Santos on B and C with B having more weight.
Do you have a recommendation? What is, what is staff recommending?
I still, for me, it's too early to tell. I think as part of the evaluation with our special counsel, I think it's something, I mean, I think B certainly has merit. I just, you know, we wouldn't understand it better in terms of how easy it is to implement and what, and what the steps are involved. So I, you know, certainly think B is something we could definitely explore further.
Okay. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I appreciate you coming to council for direction on all these things, but I think a lot of them really are kind of premature in that you have not developed that cross-sector group yet to really meet and flesh out what those things might be. I think it, once you put all those people in a room to figure all this out, some things may come up that we haven't thought of. And a public-private partnership or some other kind of funding that just, you know, would be more creative. So I appreciate being asked, but I think as we go forward, other things may come up that, that we'll like better.
Well, I guess our direction is kind of B, but be flexible if things change in the future?
Yeah, I think, I think the one thing, when you look at the public-private partnerships, the one thing, and what I'm hearing, is interest in, in some type of URA, because it's probably one of the questions that we'll ask as coming into it. And that was, I think, part of what we wanted to see is, was there an interest in an URA in the process?
All right. Council...
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. One other thing, do we have a timeline on when we're going to get that MOU from RTD so that we can start looking at land acquisition?
Yes, we do. Actually, one of the RTD members is here, and we've, we have meeting scheduled, I think, for next week, hopefully, or even tomorrow, you mentioned. But yeah, we have a schedule and timeline for the steps involved to get that MOU executed. And that's the immediate next step. After tonight's direction was to do the MOU.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
In that time, you said you had that timeline. How long will that take with?
Because RTD legally drafting MOU with input from us, and then we'll have to circulate it. But I think it was like a month. I mean, it was pretty quick. But that's the next step.
Mayor, the next item on your agenda is discussion and direction to staff regarding tax ballot language and a selection process for retail marijuana shops. Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager, is going to lead out that presentation, with Aaron Fosdick as well helping.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. Just wanted to start off by letting you know that the staff has done quite a bit of work since the last time that we met on this, in April. You all directed us in a number of areas, and so we are coming back to you tonight. We'll reiterate what you told us on various subjects as we go through the presentation, and then talk about some kind of next step processes that we, or decisions that we need to make to finalize some of that direction. But I also wanted to start by, again, thanking our committee that has been working on this. Again, Aaron Fosdick has done a tremendous amount of work on this. But we've changed the committee a little bit since the Home Grow Group, so I want to recognize Dan Kramer as our attorney, working on that, Richard Eastus from Finance, Sarah Arnie, Police, Michelle Goldman from Fire, and Don Quintana has joined us, now that we have the licensing piece in place, as Don has been managing the liquor licensing, which you all directed us to make this similar. The one piece of direction that you told us that we will not be overviewing in the presentation was just the limited public input process. And so I wanted to let you know that we did have a series of stakeholder meetings with marijuana shop owners who expressed interest in staying involved with the policy. And I had really good feedback from them. I think we've been able to incorporate a number of items that they had seen work well in other communities. And so with that, we want to just go ahead and get started. Again, we're basing tonight's presentation on the direction you gave us back in April. And we are seeking direction on four specific areas. The additional sales tax, the licensing considerations and fees, land development code consideration, and the selection process of the four businesses that you directed. So I'm just going to run through the first two slides and then turn it over to Aaron for the land use and selection process. But in terms of the sales tax rate, there were a number of considerations that you told us. You were most interested in ensuring that we were comparable to surrounding communities, and specifically, you mentioned that you would like to stay a little bit under the Boulder rate. And so looking at that Boulder rate of 3.5% additional tax on top of their regular sales tax rate, we're showing you three different scenarios, well, four really. If you kept, if you put no additional tax on it, we're estimating a revenue of 315,000. I should mention that we did, our Richard and the finance folks did a great job of estimating, trying to, these are all estimates, obviously, but using some assumptions that are, that are mentioned in your council memo, but those namely are that we estimated about an $8,000 income per store per day average, and that's based on what we gathered from some of the Boulder County stores, and particularly those that are in close proximity to Longmont. We estimated that those would be open about three point, excuse me, 6.75 days per week. They would have five holidays a year, and that that would be backing out the sales tax that they're already collecting. So that's how we, those were some of the assumptions that went into the collection fees. So assuming that you all authorized and the voters approved an additional sales tax rate of 3.4%, we're estimating that our revenue from that would jump up to about 643,000. You can see there, the other two, 3.25, added on to our existing would be 628, and then adding 3% would generate 604,000 in total sales tax revenue. A couple of things that we have learned just very recently from our attorney, who's been helping us with some of this, an advisor, is that, for instance, the city of Denver actually passed a floating tax rate of up to 15%. So they, they have not gone up to, but their voters did approve the city to tax marijuana sales up to 15%. And so Dee Wiser, the person advising us, did tell us that that is something that you all could do. Again, what we're showing you is what you directed us on April, back in April, that would be to stay just under that Boulder rate. So again, based on the mayor's direction at the beginning of the meeting, we know we're not asking you for direction tonight, but we do want to, for each of these topics, just pause and see if there are any questions, comments that you might have.
So your, your last statement, you could actually go to the voters and say, we want to have an upper limit of, say, 5%. And then we could actually decide to just do 2.5% if we wanted to, or whatever.
Right. And Jim Golden can give us a little bit more feedback on that if you want more detail. We can have that for you certainly at the next meeting, but that's correct. We could actually have, Mayor Coombs, a tax rate of up to a certain amount, and then you all could set what you wanted it to be within that range. You wouldn't have to go up... You wouldn't have to go up to 5, it could be something lower.
Essentially, what Denver did is they said, we set the tax rate, and it can be increased up to 15 percent. What it does is it lets the Denver City Council raise it without having to go back for another vote based on the way that it was worded. And so something like that in it would give the council the opportunity to do that. Or you could do the traditional method that we utilize where we just say, here's what the rate's going to be.
Well, you know, my feelings are, you know, Longmont voters are very engaged, and I think the more open and honest and, you know, I think if you just tell them exactly what you want and why you want it, you're more likely to get a bond approved than if you have some high number. I mean, that's my feelings. I kind of like just being more direct myself. Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I agree with that. I also think it's, what is our rate for alcohol? I mean, I thought we were trying to make this sort of comparable to our regulations for alcohol.
That's the standard sales tax on alcohol.
At 15 percent?
3.27.
Oh, 3.2.
The city's RAC's, city's sale tax rate is 3.275, so alcohol is the same. The only difference currently with the city is the lodging tax is a separate or additional 2 percent.
Okay. Yeah, I also think that if you raise this too high, the people will go back into the gray market and, you know, before, we talked about making this less than Boulder. I personally prefer 3.25 because it's, it's a moderate reasonable tax.
Councilmember Finley?
Well, we're not giving direction today. I kind of like the floating tax idea personally, because then if something should occur and we need more revenue to cover police, or whatever it might be, we had, we would have the ability to do that without going back to the voters. But I also see your point about transparency. And my thought was just be a little bit less than what Boulder is, and you said Boulder's at 3.5?
Five.
So, yeah, I would be okay with the 3.4.
Okay. Mayor Coombs, one additional point on this, and, and, I've just lost it, something, oh, Boulder. We did find one example of Boulder, the city of Boulder actually taxes everything located within the stores. So their t-shirts, their bumper stickers, anything like that, those are also taxed at this. That is somewhat, we think, the abnormality within the group. Most communities are simply putting this additional tax on the product itself. So that's what we would be proposing to you all based on your previous direction. But we did want to let you know that one other community does actually tax everything within the stores.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's crazy to pay an extra tax on a t-shirt or whatever. My other question was, you could actually go ahead and prepare the ballot language, and I mean, while you're waiting now, is it number three, three and a quarter, or 3.4? I mean, so it's not like we're holding you back from...
So that, so that's what we discussed earlier today, and so there's draft ballot language there. There's going to be some other questions that, the way we're going to stagger this in the meeting is, we'll pull this discussion forward to the next meeting, and we will have this before the ballot language. Because there's some other pieces that this conversation will inform that conversation.
Mayor Coombs, the next slide and next topic that we wanted to bring before you was some licensing considerations and fees. We, per your direction, have looked at and talked to state officials, looked at what the state requirements are on licensing, and are really proposing a similar, some of the similar requirements as far as information we'd be collecting, such as the, let's see, background checks, security, life safety inspections, some things that we would require of any licensing process. We also are modeling the initial licensing process, renewal process, on liquor licensing, which is what you told us back in April. That is our plan unless you direct otherwise. And then what we wanted to bring before you tonight in terms of the direction that we would be looking at are the staff recommended licensing and application fees. And so what we're proposing is to do the same licensing fee as Adams County, which would be a non-refundable licensing application fee of $15,000. We would also be looking at an operating, annual operating fee of $3,500, as well as a license renewal fee of $3,500 as well. And so we just wanted to verify that, based on your direction, to be comparable with other jurisdictions, that those licensing fees, again, when we come back next week and get firm direction, but that's what staff would be proposing on those fees.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So Sean, we're in the council direction, when we looked at other licensing application fees in the area, they were around $2,500 and $3,000. Adams County was the one that was up to $15,000. So what are the parameters for a licensing fee? What, why, what is it supposed to cover? And why do we need the amount you're proposing?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, that's a great question. So, and Don Quintana can probably speak more intelligently, and so maybe she can chime it as needed. But I did want to just tell you what I know of the application process in other communities, and that is that part of that application fee would be to pay for the staff time in evaluating the application and the license. So for instance, when Erin goes through the different options for selecting the four businesses, there's a tremendous amount of staff time that's going to be going into reviewing those applications for completeness, and then starting the process, depending on what direction that we get next week, of how we select those. So, our process, as directed by you all in April, was to do an RFP process. The RFP process, in our experience and in talking to other jurisdictions, is the most time-intensive process, and so that's why we went with the higher fees of $15,000. I should also mention that that was the recommendation of the stakeholder groups that we met with that are currently license holders in the area. They also recommended, I think universally, yeah, yeah, we actually had a couple that said, and that's not high enough, that $15,000 isn't. And so that was their recommendation as well. And so it's really to pay for the staff time that's associated with processing and intaking these applications. There is coordination that's required with the state as well, some verification checks, et cetera, so.
So what if we didn't do an RFP? What would be the, the other process? Would it just be application period, or...
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, that's a great question. And if I could defer to Erin for, it's the next slide, I think, or maybe the next one.
Oh, it is the next slide?
And so we can walk through, but there are definitely options that are less time-intensive in terms of city staff. But again, it's just a matter of council preference that we get next week. And so the, really the question here is just, should, are you still in agreement that local licensing procedures should be based on our current liquor process, which so far we haven't gotten different direction on that? And then just be thinking before next week about those application fees and how they compare to other jurisdictions, and if you're comfortable with those.
Okay, thanks.
And at this point, I'll turn it over to Erin to talk about land development code considerations, as well as the process for selecting the four businesses.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Erin Fosdick with the Planning and Development Services Department. So as Sean mentioned, I'll cover the last two items that we outlined in your council communication related to land development code considerations, as well as the selection process that we're thinking about and want direction on. The previous direction that we got from you back in April was that we should obviously consider these businesses only in non-residential areas, and that that would not include downtown. I think there was also some conversation at that meeting that downtown may include the station area, and so that's, that's something we could clarify tonight. And that really, we should look at modeling this on liquor licensing. And so you'll see, we've provided information and a map in the communication, looking at the zoning districts that could be permitted, and what we've looked at, consistent with your previous direction, was in areas where retail uses are permitted or limited, but again, outside the central business district zone, and potentially the mixed-use zone. And also looking at separation requirements that would be consistent with what we do for liquor. So I just want to note that those separation requirements, we talked about last time, liquor is 500 feet. In researching other communities and talking with stakeholders, we felt that 1,000 feet might be appropriate, and so you'll see that on the map. We also require a 250-foot separation from residentially-zoned properties, and so you'll see that on the map. And so really, what we're going to be looking for next week is, are the zoning districts, which would currently be commercial, regional commercial, mixed industrial, and business light industrial, are those the appropriate zoning districts for these types of use? And then further, are the separation requirements of 1,000 feet from any K through 12 school, and 250 feet from any residentially-zoned area appropriate? I have the map in the presentation if we want to take a look at it, but those are kind of the general parameters. I'd be happy to take any questions on that before we move to the selection process.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't know that we need to see it now, but maybe next week, we could have, have some maps that show us those different areas that would meet the criteria.
So, we can take just a minute, and I'll orient you to this, and then, I'm sure you can see this super well on the screen, each property. So what you see here really is a breakout by kind of zoning district classification. The red areas are those that are commercially zoned, so you'll see regional commercial, commercial, and areas of planned, commercial planned unit developments. The gray areas are those that are BLI, MI, or again, industrial planned unit developments. And then the purple areas are our mixed-use area, which is currently primarily the transit area, which you were just talking about, as well as the non-residential portion of some of our mixed-use PUDs. Staff is not recommending that we include those mixed-use areas, so really, when you take out the separation, the 1,000 feet from schools, which you can see the 1,000-foot buffer, that's that gold line, the red line around the schools is 500 feet. And then there's a white shading of, it's kind of cream color, it's yellow, that represents any residentially-zoned area plus 250 feet. So really, the remaining area, those areas that are showing up on this map as red or gray, are the areas in which this use could be permitted under what we've put for, based on your direction.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Oh. What, I was curious about what are, I would hate to see these all like in one area. Do we have any comparable restrictions on liquor stores? For instance, you can't have 10 liquor stores with, in a certain area?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, we don't have any separation requirements for like businesses. And we've talked about that with other types of businesses and haven't chosen to do that. That's certainly something council could look at. I think there's pros and cons to that, and certainly, you know, we've gotten some feedback from public safety staff that there may actually be a benefit to having businesses clustered in a single area. It may also, you know, be a market decision that businesses choose not to do that. So that's not a direction that we got last time, we didn't include it. It does make it a little bit more difficult from an administration standpoint, but that's certainly something that we could look at.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I can't tell from this map, but for example, if native roots wanted to be annexed in, are they in an area that we would allow that?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, it's a, it's sort of a tricky question, because properties that aren't within the city aren't zoned under the city's zoning code.
Of course.
And so if a property, if a business wanted to come into the city, we would, we being, you, council, would give it zoning at the time of annexation, and we would base that zoning on the envisioned Longmont land use. And so in, I believe, in both the cases of the stores on our borders, those would be in land uses that could be consistent with the zoning districts that we're talking about. We would just want to make sure that, you know, we zoned them appropriately if they were going to annex to the city, if that makes sense. So it's, it's kind of a reverse process. That would be possible, because council would be not only negotiating an annexation agreement that could allow those uses, but also giving zoning that would permit specific types of uses.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, hypothetically, what if we just made things simpler? We just controlled this by the zoning and market forces? If you look at these areas, I mean, let's just say that we didn't have, you know, give direction for, that we were just limiting it to four stores. It seems like this would only be, you know, maybe a maximum of seven, because there's just not that many areas that are, you know, do you have a feel for how many maximum stores if you took the restrictions and just let market force drive the applications, or is that not something you've ever considered?
Yeah, thanks for setting that up, Mayor. It's a really great segue. To our next question for you, you know, I think as we started looking at the maps and looking at the direction, we sort of realized that that's kind of how it played out. And so as we started looking at the selection process, we determined that that may be another option to consider, and so we've listed that here. The previous council direction was to limit the number of establishments within the city to four establishments that would serve residents 21 and older, and that we should use some type of modified RFP process to select these four businesses. So since we last talked in April, we've developed a set of what we think are detailed submittal requirements that we would likely want to require regardless of the selection process we used, and we modeled those on what some other communities are looking at. But then we really started talking about, and have had frankly, a lot of debate about what, what the additional process would be to pick the four businesses, or if we would even need an additional process, or could we just let the market decide? Because as you noted from the map, the number of locations is relatively limited. When you couple that with a willing property owner or property seller, a number of other, you know, potential building restrictions, there's a lot of other factors that it's, it's not like even every property on that map would potentially be a candidate to be a store. So that is a third option for how we might allow these businesses in the city, is really to just let the market decide that. I think it's difficult to say how many businesses would that yield. It could be less than four, it could be four, or it could be more. I don't think we know that, because what we've heard from our stakeholder group is that there's a number of other things that go into a decision on whether a property owner is willing to lease to these types of business, if a property's for sale or not, what the other tenants are, if it's a multi-tenant building, what types of improvements might be needed to be made to a space. And so there's a number of other things. I don't know that we could tell you confidently what that number could result in. Again, it could be anywhere from one to upper, above one. Zero to, zero to something above one, is what I could confidently say. So the direction that we're really looking for, I guess, next week would be, does council really support looking at the additional, requiring the detailed submittal items for all applications, regardless of the selection process that we use? And those are detailed in this table here. Is it really important to limit the number of establishments to four, or could a market-based approach work? And then finally, kind of building off that second question, what selection process, true R, modified RFP, kind of an RFP process with a lottery, or really this market-based approach should be used to select the business?
So the market-based approach is the two, number two, basically?
So, yeah, I mean, really what we've outlined is that we would have detailed submittal requirements for any application. We could go through an RFP process, collect all this, evaluate applications, and then have some type of team that scored the applications and really ranked them and picked the top four. Or we could go through, make sure that each business met the minimum requirements, and then, let's say, 15 businesses meant the requirements, we could throw those all into one of those big machines and have you turn it, and then, you know, Councilmember Santos could pick four tags out of there. You know, so we could do more of a lottery with fully-vetted businesses. Or we could say, you have to submit all these things. If you submit them, and if you secure a location and get through our development review process, our site planning process, then you can open a store as long as you meet all the other requirements. That's really the market-based approach.
Right, yeah, I like that. Right, yeah, I like that.
Councilmember Christensen?
The reason I want to start off cautiously with this and just have four is because I do not want this town to ever go through, again, what they did to the people who spoke earlier, Allison, who spoke earlier about starting a business, then having it shut down. What happens if peoples feel like there are too many businesses? Then, we'll go back to that same process and say, "Well, now, we've got to get rid of some." I don't want us to do that again, so I would rather start off cautiously with four businesses and see how that goes. And I would, I would, I know that this didn't receive the endorsement of the whole council last time, but I would like to preferences, preference businesses that have already been dealing with, that we've already been dealing with, like native roots, because they have, they've been here a long time, and this business that has been here a long time, we know that they are good, we know that they contribute to the community, and other businesses that we drove out of business before, I think they should have a preferential shot. So, I would, my preference would be...
You know, we're not giving formal direction today.
I know. No, I know, but I'm just saying, I would choose the other one where we have, where we have a process we go through, but we preference establishments that have already been here or that have been put out.
So, I do have a question on the, let's say, someone submits an application, gives you, pays you the fifteen thousand dollars, and you can, like, in the first three hours of looking at it, you can tell it's a non-starter, you know, because of this, this, and this, and there's very little staff time. Is there any, could you, like, at that point, kick them out and say, "Well, we spent $3,000 every fifteen thousand dollars to get to this point, but because of, you know, this criminal background or whatever, you know, you're just not going to make the cut." I mean, do you fully have to spend the fifteen thousand dollars for every application in staff time if you?
Mayor Coombs, I think that that's something council could give us direction on. I think what we've talked about is, in order to make it as fair a process as possible, we would probably have a limited window, so say, you know, we would open the process for 21 days, we would take everything in, and we wouldn't really look at everything until that 21-day period is closed.
Okay.
And then, we would go through the applications, and, I mean, we do this right now with development applications where we deem them sufficient or not, and if they're not sufficient, then they don't start through the review process. So, it could be something similar to that. That would be direction council could give us. You know, I think as Sean mentioned, as we started going through all this and talking to some of the other communities, we did recognize that this could be a significant staff time commitment, and so, we wanted to make sure that we were spending resources adequately, but certainly, that's something, you know, we could say, "We'll refund half if your application's not deemed sufficient," or whatever council could give us direction to that effect.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any other input you need tonight or anymore. I'd just like to thank, you know, you guys for all the hard work you've done, because sometimes our direction as council's not crystal clear.
So, we will plan on coming back next week. We'll put this information in your packet again and be available for questions, and unless you for sure need us to do the presentation again, we'll just maybe put the questions that we have up on the screen for you, if that works.
Yeah, put the questions, maybe bring the map back, too. I mean, I think that's a good piece of information.
So, I know you all had it in your packet.
Yes.
But it's small to read.
Yeah.
Would it help you all if we provided you with a larger printed version?
Sure. Well, I mean, I think what I see on the screen is good enough for me, but...
Okay, I mean, I just know.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well...
Pardon?
Thank you very much.
I would like it printed out, I can see it better.
Councilmember Finley?
I was just saying, my eyesight's not very good, so printing it out might be good for me.
Okay. All right, so now, it's time for mayor and council comments. First off, I want to ask you a question, Harold. Do you know why Sun Construction has not submitted a CPW application?
No, actually, that was one of the things that I was going to talk about in my city management comments, but I can go ahead and address it now based on a number of questions. So, what I wanted to say is that we have communicated, Joni has communicated with Sun Construction indicating that they need to resubmit. I know that Joni's had conversations, Sean's had a conversation, I've had a conversation about, you know, what's required based on our code and the CPW process, and so, we've been consistent on that front. As we indicated to council, CPW has to approve it, the impacted county has to approve it in order for that to occur, in terms of why they haven't done it. I know they're working on the process, but I'm not, I can't answer that question. Really, what we do is, in those situations, is we say, "Here's what the requirement is, and the developer has to provide us with that information." So, I can't answer that question specifically.
Okay.
One of the things that, so, I wanted to say, A, I mean, we have been adhering to the ordinance as we've been going through the process. There has been some questions regarding, so, what happens if they do something that's out of line with the ordinance? And with, like any ordinance, we would issue a notice of violation for non-compliant, non-compliance issues, and then, in our code of ordinances, it gives us a number of remedies. One would be withholding permits and any authorizations for development activity to There's a list within the code, I can go over all of those, but it would essentially be an NOV for not conforming with the code.
Okay.
In that situation. I also did want to say, and Dale talked to me about this, and I know I'm going to butcher the name of this parcel, but the Ome property that was mentioned, that's actually a prospective park site that's in our parks master plan, and so, there are more issues to that than just being able to use that as a relocation site because it is in there as a future park site.
Okay.
And then, I know there's been a lot of questions, I know there's been a lot of emails. I'd be happy to answer any questions from council if I didn't answer your questions that have been coming up, so.
Okay. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. So, Harold, the Rocky Flats site, it has not been written off yet, though. Jefferson County hasn't said anything because they haven't been approached with an application, is that correct?
Well, so, what I've heard is that they haven't been approached. The only thing that I know about the Rocky Flat side is that there's been a letter from the county manager stating that staff won't support it.
Is that kind of a moot point, though? Because it's...
CPW requires that the county commissioners take an official action on that process, so that CPW requirement is very specific. And so, example that I use is, there's a lot of times where I can say, "Well, I'm not sure I can support this," but at the end of the day, it's really the council's decision based on the way that the state law is written in this case.
Okay. You mentioned, and I don't know, did you have a chance to verify that if any adjoining property owners, even if one, a property owner did not want the relocation on the site that was adjacent to theirs, then the whole thing falls apart?
I haven't been able to verify that, that's something I want to look at, but based on conversations I had, as you know, we're dealing with prairie dogs on city properties.
Right.
And I've been asking questions about how we deal with prairie dogs in our location to make sure that we're meeting the intent of our requirements as we go through this process. And what I've heard is that if, and here's the example I will use, is that if you have five property owners and one property owner does not agree to have them located to that area, then CPW will deny the relocation. That is something that I want to verify to make sure.
Okay.
But I have heard that from our staff that has done this before in other locations, so I just need to double-check that, but that's definitely what I'm hearing.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions from council on this?
No, don't see any, so now, we can just transition to council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just had a quick question. A constituent asked me about graffiti. Apparently, there's more graffiti, they've noticed more graffiti, and I, after she mentioned that, noticed more myself. What is the process for people who see it to report it, or how is it handled? Can you tell me, or just refresh me, because I don't remember?
Joni, we can't, we have the graffiti removal program, and they can call us, and we will put it on the location. Joni, do you want to come up and give them the phone numbers, because I don't...
You just remember that off the top of your head, don't you?
I think we're all, she can tell you, we're all, you know, we have the Cisco system internally, so we can just type it in and hit the send button, so.
Mayor and council, I don't know that off the top of my head, but Sean's going to look it up for me. So, right now, actually, it's a good question, I've had it recently, so, Mike, who works in code enforcement, is our graffiti removal specialist for the city, and he's running about three, four, sometimes five weeks behind based on the volume, and we all are also getting some assistance from parks folks in parks because that's where we get a lot of graffiti as well, but yes, we are keenly aware that there is a big uptick right now. We looked at hiring some additional temporary staff, and we did that for about two weeks, and that didn't work out for that particular person, so we're going to revisit that about getting some additional help here for the remainder of the year. And if folks want to call in graffiti, it's 303-651-8695.
And I think Joni made a good point. In the past, when we, like, the last time we had an issue, the trailer was actually down, and Public Works and Natural Resources really stepped in and helped us out, so based on that volume, we're seeing it. The other thing is, in talking to other folks in other departments, we're also in summer, and when you get into the summertime and kids are out of school, you start seeing other things happening, too, so those are all issues that we're trying to look out for.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have a couple of things. First, to the residents who contacted me about this meeting on 17th Avenue, I want you to know that the city's installing a traffic signal at the intersection of Harvard and 17th. So, the work's going to begin in August and will be finished sometime early fall. So, I'm also interested to see if this helps mitigate that problem. Second, I just want to thank Bob Ball and the traffic engineers for realigning the lanes on Third Avenue and Terry Streets. The parishioners are really happy about that at the First Lutheran Church because they have their parking spaces back. And third, I want to give a shout-out to Velo Bikes on the west side of Francis Street and 11th Avenue. I was on my bike ride and noticed that the mechanism that secures the front wheel on had suddenly opened up, and my wheel was not secure. So, I walked it into Velo Bikes, and they were incredibly professional, great customer service, and took, fixed it immediately because they knew it was unsafe. So, if you ever stop into Velo Bikes, give them a heads-up. They also are having Wednesday night bike rides. You can go on velobikes.com to view their events. These are adult bike rides, not family. So, that's it, have a great week.
So, I'd like to say a little bit about Velo Bikes, too. They replaced, I just had to go on vacation, I know you're on my own maintenance, but I didn't have time, and I had a race ride when I came back, and I took my bike in there, and their mechanic, Tony, he's fabulous. I mean, my bike has never shifted crisper, cleaner, I mean, I'm totally blown away because, you know, usually, I felt like I had to go to Boulder sometimes to get really good mechanics, but this guy was just amazing. You know, we've had this big discussion about healthcare in our country, and now that it's gone down in flames in the senate, and they're talking about, you know, basically repealing Obamacare, you know, that there are, something that's really simple, but it's not easy, that we can all do, and I think it could probably help 75% of our population. And, you know, I'm going to stress again, it's simple, but it's not easy. You know, basically, it's eat half as much animal products, eat twice as much fruits and vegetables, and exercise 150 minutes a week. If you did those three things, you could transform your health. And anyway, that's my solution to our healthcare crisis is be proactive because it looks like our government's not going to do anything for us at this point, so. Any other comments from council? All right. City manager, any other comments?
No more comments, mayor and council.
Okay. City attorney, any comments?
Mayor and council, I do not have any, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.